Call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. There are a couple of additions to the agenda, so we have, let me just look at my additions. We have the postponement of buyback agreement for York Street, and then we have sale of services to the town of Lunenburg for parking enforcement. Are there any other additions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Chairman Mayor Tanner seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements, just a proclamation. Proclamations now go on our website and on Facebook page, that is that September is Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month, and September 9th is the day that recognizes that. Are there any other announcements from members of council?
We have an event.
Yes, finally, woo!
So, the Bridgewater Skate Park Committee and Friends of the Skate Park have organized Skate of the Art. We weren't able to hold it last year, so we're excited to be back this year. The event is, it's a really unique one. We have plank skateboard decks that are put into the hands of local artists, and they turn them into incredible works of art. They're on display at the Desperay Museum now until, I believe tomorrow is your last day to see them and get a sneak peek in advance, so you should definitely pop in. I believe they close at 5:00 to pop in and see them. Figure out which one is your favorite and get ready to bid, because on Saturday, the boards will move over to the LCLC where there will be an auction. People can come and see them in person, however, numbers will be limited according to, according to the rules, where we'll follow all rules and make sure that we keep things safe. But there will be online bidding as well. You'll be able to access that through the Skate of the Art Facebook page, or you can contact one of the committee members if you need any assistance in figuring out how to work that. I can be contacted at 529-0574. I'm sure you all caught that very quickly. Or you could probably call Town Hall and they'd be able to put you in contact with me.
Excellent, thank you. Excited for that. And the square show is on at the Desperay now. I was at the opening reception for that, and it was as busy as it could be due to limited numbers due to COVID, but it's so awesome to see the talented local artists. And I saw some of the Skate of the Art boards there.
They're great.
Stunning. And you don't have to be, like, you don't have to skateboard, right? Like, you could mount that on a wall as a piece of art above a mantel or something like that. It's quite something. Any other announcements from members of council? All right, we will move down then to delegations. So we have Christopher Craig and Allison Clements, Rock for a Cause fundraiser. So, welcome, come on down. Love the mask.
It's a rock star.
Of course. So, just as, you've probably already been told, our delegation policy says you have 10 minutes to speak.
Yeah, oh, that'll give me plenty of time. Plenty, plenty, plenty. Thank you for having me. Okay, I got, I got things written, because that's the way I roll. Good evening. My name's Christopher Craig. In September of 2019, I was abided to the South Shore Regional Hospital. Little did I know my life was about to change forever. To make a long story short, I experienced what people call a near-death experience. I spent eight months on the third floor of the Bed Surge unit. In that time, I formed a bond with my caregivers, and there aren't words to describe the gratitude I have. In that time, my former coworkers held a fundraiser to help my family, the community, and my customer base really embraced my family. I'll never forget it. Also, in that time, I witnessed the inner workings in the hospital and how much they do. And in my case, it's my belief that there are several that went out of their way to be there for me. After I physically healed from my ordeal, I returned to work and proceeded to plan a charity event for our nurses that was set to go live March of 2020. And then the world changed. The event I initially planned was a thank you to the people that saved my life, but has become more, so much more than, so much more than me since then. It's my hope to hold an outdoor music and community event on King Street. I've been working closely with Allison from South Shore Health Foundation and Pat Hurdle from Town Communications. I hope to have a total of eight bands, beginning at 2:00 p.m. and running to the headliner until 11:00 p.m. It's my vision to have a day of community, unity, and Nova Scotia Strong, with a closed area of King requiring a minimum donation for entry. I've already approached Furkinstein, and they are fully on board with the event. I also have several of the bands confirmed. It is also my hope to have several fruit trucks and Jack's Burger involved as well. At the end of the day, it is my goal to raise money for equipment needed and hopefully help the community heal from an insane time in our history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. And, so, my name's Allison, and I am the Development Officer with the Health Services Foundation, the South Shore. Mayor and council, thank you for having us. You know, we hear these stories all the time, and, I mean, obviously, the public doesn't get a huge chance, maybe you see it on Facebook, but there's wonderful care that happens behind the walls, both at Fisherman's Memorial Hospital in Lunenburg, but especially here at South Shore Regional Hospital, that covers both Lunenburg and Queen's Counties. And so, when you have a story like this come through the doors, it really drives home how important it is to have the health care that we do have in our backyard. And so, we've been working with Chris to try to figure this out, because honestly, the pandemic kind of threw us for a loop. But truly, it's what it is, is a way to say thank you. It's a way to say thank you to the community for supporting local health care. It's a way to especially allow Chris to say his big thank you back to the people who literally saved his life. And so, we're hoping that the town, council, mayor, and everyone can come together and, and say thank you and enjoy some live music with people, socially distanced appropriately, of course. But, you know, it's a, it's a wonderful way to get out. And so, we're just the Health Services Foundation, we're just a vessel for our community to be able to say thank you back to the hospital and invest in our local health care. And so, I really hope that the town will consider helping Chris with Rock for a Cause and giving back to our hospitals. So, thank you very much. We wrap that up super quick. Is there any questions?
Questions from council.
I'm just wondering if you have a date in mind at this point?
Yes.
Yep.
September 25th, it's a Saturday.
September 25th to, the street closure would be two-ish, right?
Yeah.
Yep, two.
Two to 11:00 p.m.
Yes.
So, is the request to town really for the in-kind, like, the street closure and all the stuff that goes with that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And the porta-potties have been donated.
They have been donated for the event.
By Dalton Jodry, so Dalton Jodry Plumbing. So, Chris is the main organizer. We're here just to say thank you, and also to know that there is a backing of a registered charity behind the event.
So, traditionally, council doesn't really entertain, like, we usually receive it, and then in our next meeting entertain it, so.
And also, with respects to the policy, if it's under 500 of in-kind, then that's something that can be addressed with staff. If it's over, yeah, if it's over 500, then it comes to council, my understanding, and I'm looking to Patrick, is it, it's under 500, right, in terms of the value?
Ish, yeah.
So, the policy says, the policy says, so, CAO can address that, right?
Yeah.
Which, which makes it happen a little quicker.
Yeah, so there is an event application that's required to be made, and then we'll do that assessment.
Excellent. And that application has been filed, so we're, we're kosher then. This is good.
Other questions, Councilor Thorburn?
Location, is it from the old Bridge to Empire Street? Were you blocking it off?
I believe so, sir.
Anyone else? Awesome. Oh, Councilor, Councilor Caldwell, sorry.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'd love to support it. I am wondering, I'm not sure who to address this to, maybe Tammy, but public health protocols?
Yeah, so, we'll have to assess what type of protocols are in place at that time, because there are gathering limits for outdoor events. And if, if those restrictions remain in place, then they'll have to have a plan that would be approved by public health, or they'd have to comment on it to ensure that they met that and how they're going to meet.
We're praying to be in phase five.
But, you know what, the benefit of the past year has proved how we can kind of ebb and flow, so we're ready. But yes, hopefully, we will be in phase five by then, but who knows?
Yeah, and the responsibility to meeting that would be on the event organizer.
We would have to ensure that, that, that there was an approved plan in place, yeah.
If we're not in phase five, is there a chance we would postpone it?
Don't say that. I mean.
Two years.
No, but.
Absolutely. There's always room for discussion, of course.
Okay.
Again, being flexible is.
Flexible is the key.
Chris has rocked it over the, no, some pun intended, I suppose, but he's really, really been flexible with the planning around this, so.
Yeah, we're flexible.
We're certainly on the right path towards.
I got some musicians involved that are flexible with that.
Other questions? Awesome. So, we'll leave that with CAO to liaise with the guests.
Thank you for your time, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Our next item means we have the minutes from the July 12, 2021 meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, I am prepared to move the approval of the minutes. Councilor Caldwell seconded by Councilor McDonald. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we are down to planning items. So, this, we have a couple of public hearings, and so we have to kind of move into that public hearing phase, so council kind of stops while we go through this. And so, I will, I will call, declare the public hearing open. And I'll note that the agenda, the first one is to deal with the rezoning of 677 La Havre Street. All the statutory requirements have been met, and a reminder that council's decision is governed by the municipal planning strategy and the decision of council at the end of this, there is a 14-day appeal period. So, I guess we'll turn it over to the planner.
Which one is your favorite and get ready to bid because on Saturday the boards will move over to the LCLC where there will be an auction. People can come and see them in person, however, numbers will be limited according to the rules, we'll follow all rules and make sure that we keep things safe. But there will be online bidding as well. You'll be able to access that through the Skate of the Art Facebook page, or you can contact one of the committee members if you need any assistance in figuring out how to work that. I can be contacted at 529-0574. I'm sure you all caught that very quickly. Or you could probably call Town Hall and they'd be able to put you in contact with me.
Excellent, thank you. Excited for that. And the Square Show is on at the Desperay now. I was at the opening reception for that and it was as busy as it could be due to limited numbers due to COVID, but it's so awesome to see the talented local artists. And I saw some of the Skate of the Art boards there.
They're great.
Stunning. And you don't have to be, like, you don't have to skateboard, right? Like, you could mount that on a wall as a piece of art above a mantel or something like that, it's quite something. Any other announcements from members of council? All right, we will move down then to delegations. So we have Christopher Craig and Allison Clements, Rock for a Cause fundraiser. So welcome, come on down. Love the mask.
It's a rock, sir.
Of course. So just as, you probably have already been told, our delegation policy says you have 10 minutes to speak.
Yeah, oh, that'll give me plenty of time. Plenty, plenty, plenty. Thank you for having me. Okay, I got, I got things written because that's the way I roll. Good evening, my name is Christopher Craig. In September of 2019, I was abided to the South Shore Regional Hospital. Little did I know my life was about to change forever. To make a long story short, I experienced what people call a near-death experience. I spent eight months on the third floor of the bed surge unit. In that time, I formed a bond with my caregivers, and there aren't words to describe the gratitude I have. In that time, my former coworkers held a fundraiser to help my family, the community, and my customer base really embraced my family. I'll never forget it. Also in that time, I witnessed the inner workings in the hospital and how much they do. And in my case, it's my belief that there are several that went out of their way to be there for me. After I physically healed from my ordeal, I returned to work and proceeded to plan a charity event for our nurses that was set to go live March of 2020. And then the world changed. The event I initially planned was a thank you to the people that saved my life, but has become more, so much more than, so much more than me since then. It's my hope to hold an outdoor music and community event on King Street. I've been working closely with Allison from South Shore Health Foundation and Pat Hurdle from Town Communications. I hope to have a total of eight bands beginning at 2:00 p.m. and running to the headliner until 11:00 p.m. It's my vision to have a day of community, unity, and Nova Scotia Strong with a closed area of King requiring a minimum donation for entry. I've already approached Furkinstein and they are fully on board with the event. I also have several of the bands confirmed. It is also my hope to have several fruit trucks and Jack's Burger involved as well. At the end of the day, it is my goal to raise money for equipment needed and hopefully help the community heal from an insane time in our history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. And so my name's Allison, and I am the Development Officer with the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us. You know, we hear these stories all the time, and I mean, obviously, the public doesn't get a huge chance, maybe you see it on Facebook, but there's wonderful care that happens behind the walls, both at Fisherman's Memorial Hospital in Lunenburg, but especially here at South Shore Regional Hospital that covers both Lunenburg and Queen's Counties. And so when you have a story like this come through the doors, it really drives home how important it is to have the healthcare that we do have in our backyard. And so we've been working with Chris to try to figure this out because honestly, the pandemic kind of threw us for a loop. But truly, it's what it is, is a way to say thank you. It's a way to say thank you to the community for supporting local healthcare. It's a way to especially allow Chris to say his big thank you back to the people who literally saved his life. And so we're hoping that the town, council, mayor, and everyone can come together and say thank you and enjoy some live music with people socially distanced appropriately, of course. But you know, it's a wonderful way to get out. And so we're just, the Health Services Foundation, we're just a vessel for our community to be able to say thank you back to the hospital and invest in our local healthcare. And so I really hope that the town will consider helping Chris with Rock for a Cause and giving back to our hospitals. So thank you very much. We wrap that up super quick. Is there any questions?
Questions from council?
I'm just wondering if you have a date in mind at this point?
Yes.
September the 25th, it's a Saturday.
September 25th to, the street closure would be two-ish, right?
Yep.
Yep, two.
Two to 11:00 p.m.
Yes.
So is the request to town really for the in-kind, like, the street closure and all the stuff that goes with that?
Yep.
And the porta-potties have been donated.
They have been donated for the event.
By Dalton Jodry, so Dalton Jodry Plumbing. So Chris is the main organizer. We're here just to say thank you and also to know that there is a backing of a registered charity behind the event.
So traditionally, council doesn't really entertain, like, we usually receive it and then in our next meeting entertain it, so.
And also with respects to the policy, if it's under 500 of in-kind, then that's something that can be addressed with staff. If it's over, yeah, if it's over 500, then it comes to council, my understanding, and I'm looking to Patrick, is it, it's under 500, right, in terms of the value?
Ish, yeah.
So the policy says, the policy says, so C A O can address that, right?
Yeah.
Which makes it happen a little quicker.
Yeah, so there is an event application that's required to be made and then we'll do that assessment.
Excellent, and that application has been filed, so we're kosher then, this is good.
Other questions, Councilor Thorburn?
Location, is it from the old Bridge to Empire Street? Were you blocking it off?
I believe so, sir.
Anyone else? Awesome. Oh, Councilor, Councilor Caldwell, sorry.
I think it's a wonderful idea and I'd love to support it. I am wondering, I'm not sure who to address this to, maybe Tammy, but public health protocols?
Yeah, so we'll have to assess what type of protocols are in place at that time because there are gathering limits for outdoor events. And if those restrictions remain in place, then they'll have to have a plan that would be approved by public health, or they'd have to comment on it to ensure that they met that and how they're going to meet it.
We're praying to be in phase five.
But, you know, the benefit of the past year has proved how we can kind of ebb and flow, so we're ready. But yes, hopefully, we will be in phase five by then, but who knows?
Yeah, and the responsibility to meeting that would be on the event organizer.
We would have to ensure that there was an approved plan in place, yeah.
If we're not in phase five, is there a chance we postpone it?
Don't say that. I mean.
Two years.
No, but.
Absolutely. There's always room for discussion, of course.
Okay.
Again, being flexible is.
Flexible is the key.
Chris has rocked it over the, no, some pun intended, I suppose, but he's really, really been flexible with the planning around this, so.
Yeah, we're flexible.
Certainly on the right path towards.
I got some musicians involved that are flexible with that.
Other questions? Awesome, so we'll leave that with C A O to liaise with the guests.
Thank you for your time, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Our next item is, we have the minutes from the July 12, 2021 meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none. I'm prepared to move the approval of the minutes. Council Caldwell seconded by, Council McDonald, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. And we are down to planning items. So this, we have a couple of public hearings, and so we have to kind of move into that public hearing phase, so council kind of stops while we go through this. And so I will, I will call, declare the public hearing open. And I'll note that the agenda, the first one is to deal with the rezoning of 677 La Hav Street. All the statutory requirements have been met, and a reminder that council's decision is governed by the municipal planning strategy and the decision of council at the end of this, there is a 14-day appeal period. So I guess we'll turn it over to the planner. Nelson, I hope Nelson's here online?
Yeah. Hey, yeah. Can everyone see and hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, great, okay. Let me know if there's any technical challenges throughout my presentation. So yeah, this, this presentation is an opportunity to go through over the application and look at some of the policies that are applicable, as well as the process that we went through for the application. So yeah, this, as Mayor David Mitchell said, this is for the second reading of the proposed rezoning at 677 La Hav Street. So an application was received on the May 12, 2021 for rezoning at the property located at 677 La Hav Street. Current zoning is C5 general commercial, and the owners are requesting to rezone the property to two-unit residential. The intention of the rezoning is to enable the subdivision of three separate lots for single-unit dwellings or two-unit dwelling developments. The property is located on La Hav Street and abuts the La Hav River. The property was formerly the site of Croson Show warehouse. It currently sits vacant because the structure was demolished in 2010. So the rezoning is from, so C5, which is intended for broad range of commercial uses in high-流量 traffic areas, primarily on the entryways into Bridgewater. Two-unit residential accommodates single-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, and seven density dwellings on the same or separate lots. So when we receive an application as staff, we look at the municipal planning strategy and land use by law to ensure that the application is in line with those two documents. The M P S lines general provisions and policies for each zone, and the land use by law carries out those policies through specific regulations, through prohibited land uses, property setbacks, and that sort of thing. So here's the site in context of other zonings. So most of this surrounding zoning is either R1, which is single-unit residential. There's also C5 across the street, and there's park zoning immediately northwest. So the future land use map guides development patterns in the future, and the intended, or the designation for this property is low-density residential, which usually accommodates a single and two-unit residential development. So when we receive an application, we look at the 15 objective statements. These are the objective statements that are most relevant to this rezoning, and they mostly have to do with compatibility of the land uses being proposed with adjacent land uses. They also look to promote and encourage things like compact development. They look at the town's infrastructure and its ability to accommodate the kind of development that's proposed. And for this one, it's important to look at objective statement number seven, which is controlling land use and development in a manner that will preserve and protect the natural environment, and that's because it abuts the La Hav River. We also look at policy I F six, which are some implementation policies. So in terms of sanitary wastewater, any development that would occur on the site would be subject to the wastewater veteran by law, so they're being charged for each unit of development. The development is, the proposed development is located on an arterial street, which is intended for higher traffic volumes and is adequate to support the intended use. If development were to occur, engineering has recommended that a sidewalk curbs extended north of such properties would have adequate access to the street. And there are some environmental constraints that have been identified based on the environmental constraints map, including there's flood risk of about 65% probability with a 100-year storm that has a 2.2-meter storm surge. Any development that would occur on the site, I spoke to in previous presentations and meetings for this application, would require a detailed engineering study and environmental controls to ensure that the development is safe for any intended use. So the current, the post-site is under the La Hav River Development Agreement area, and so any development that would take place would have to go through a development agreement process. And because we're at the rezoning stage, development agreement is not yet required, so that development would be required once any kind of single or two-unit residential development is, I guess, applied for. So just a little bit of background on the La Hav River Development Agreement area, so it was established in 1997. It abuts additional regulations, and some of the regulations look at the consistency of downtown and waterfront master plan, flood risk mitigation. It also ensures that there's no significant flooding or erosion in accordance with the environmental constraints, which I mentioned, and landscaping plan would be required as well. So when considering any development, council must refer to this study that was done, the flood risk, the study that was done, when approving development agreements to ensure that any risks associated with the development are accounted for. There's also setback requirements under this development agreement area. And the downtown waterfront master plan guides development in Bridgewater's core. And one of the guiding principles that should be considered is sustainability principle around the ecology of the La Hav River, that it should be enhanced and address implications of sea level rise and climate change. There was a public participation meeting as required by the M G A. There was one attendant, they expressed concern around flood risk to the site. The attendee had previous experience having their property flooded and had taken several steps in terms of mitigation to address that. The attendee suggested that properties along the La Hav River be rezoned to conservation in the future. So to summarize all the information that I presented, so some of the concerns presented during the public participation meeting are around flood risk, and those concerns would be addressed with the La Hav River Development Agreement area process. And according to existing policies, the development is permitted in the La Hav River Development Agreement area if certain criteria are met, and further proposed development meets the future land use designation for the property and other policies used on strategies. And so that has led us to make a recommendation that the rezoning be permitted because it does comply with existing policies and land use by law. Should council, as I know where there was, there's questions brought up at the planning analysis stage and in first reading, so should council, you know, have concerns about development that occurs on properties about the river, community development staff will be initiating a process in the next year or two, plan a meeting process that will look at policies and, and any changes that are required to those policies. And it could be that council wants staff to direct their focus on the La Hav River Development Agreement area, and a public consultation process would be required as part of this. So this is the process that was undertaken, which is standard, and so the next step would be a culmination of amendments starting a 14-day appeal period to the U A R P. So the recommendation is that town council of the town of Bridgewater is second in line of consideration to propose that amendment of the land use by law. And so that's my presentation, and I believe we have some registered speakers, including the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Nelson. Are there, before we move to that, are there any questions from council of our planner? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just the last time this was presented, July, July 12th, I'm pretty sure I heard staff suggest that the review of conservation zones, and this particular piece being a conservation, zone conservation, was soon, not as I just heard, a year or two years down the road. So I just wanted to clarify what the timeline is. And I voted against this the first time around because if, if they're reviewing these zones in a short period of time, then why are we rushing the zoning to see how this all shakes out?
My, my understanding is, is that would be part of the plan review, of which this year in our work plan, we have that staff would come forward with a plan to council on how the plan review would take place. But a plan review can take a couple of years, if not, if not longer. So it's ultimately up to council, because it's your policy, your planning document is to win. You look at those, but it's recommended that you take a comprehensive look at that as opposed to parcelling things out and looking at them independently. So it could be a couple of years out before you're at the stage that you're doing that, that review of your plan, which would include looking at that development agreement overlay.
So soon is now a couple of years out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions of the planner before we move into the next part of this? Hearing none. As we work through this, and just so people know, this is laid out in the Municipal Government Act, how we're supposed to follow this, so it's, I have a little, now I have a couple of cheat sheets because the first one was just too hard for me to follow. So we're just working through this very systematically. So the next on the list is a presentation from the applicant. So call them down to the podium, please, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and members of council. My name is Colleen O'Neil. It's my husband, Tom. It is us that made application for the rezoning at 677 La Hav Street. I too have a lot of cheat sheets tonight, so bear with me. So I just wanted to correct something. We actually were in attendance of the public participation meeting, not just one person. We just got there late. We both came back from COVID vaccinations and technologically, I could not sign in to the meeting. So we did get there, but a half hour late, so we missed the first half of the discussion. So we're here to talk about 677 La Hav Street and the rezoning, so I'm just going to press this, Patrick. Okay. So these lots have been owned for probably the past 36 years and known as the opposite side of the Croson Show building, where a separate warehouse had been and operated. The original lots, you can see what we're hoping to do here. We've had a preliminary survey done, and the lot sizes actually meet the minimum. If we should subdivide it into three, it could be two. This is the original Croson Show on the other side of the street. And the original lots were built in three pieces. So you see the old, I think it started out as a 7-Up bottling plant to M and O's, for those of you who remember back that far. But M and O's Bottling, and then Tom's family purchased it from M and O's Bottling, where they operated Croson Show wholesale. We're asking for residential zoning for this as we've had a few phone calls from members of the public who were interested in possibly building smaller homes there, little retirement homes. They were close to the town center, they could walk. And so this sort, sort of started six months ago, us reconsidering us having that change from commercial to residential. Now, in 2013, the study was done to discuss river charge, discharge, and surge, and the study determined our area of the La Hav was at risk, mostly to sediment and snow melt and rains coming down, not tidal. Whereas the Bridgewater Mall, Shipyard Landing, and all of these other areas had tidal surge and flooded, excuse me, flooded out the roads. In 2013, we made application, we decided to have those buildings demolished, they were older and kind of unattractive on the street, and we made application to construct an erosion of flood mitigation wall, which was done by Department of Environment, the engineer at the time, who I believe was Philip Corkum with the town, and Eric Shaw was the planner at the time. We had a licensed contractor and engineer, everyone there, everything was done the right way, and the retaining wall was constructed, and water has not breached that area. Back in 1976, when it did flood out, and I believe a portion of the bridge went, there was an ice jam, and that is the only time, and that was without flood mitigation on that area of, of the wall, or the riverbank, that water had breached that side of the hill, and a bit of that water went into the warehouse building where Croson Show is on that side of the street. So last month, there were a couple of things brought up that I just wanted to quickly discuss. So the first thing was talk of, of the neighboring properties flooding. We had this wall, and as you can see, it's, it's quite tall, and it was done by environmental standards at the time of 2013. And you are looking on the right-hand side at the high water mark, as the high tide as it sits beside the neighboring property. It, we have an engineering actually coming down tomorrow just to take a look at everything, but it certainly would withstand a little bit of surge, and we felt very comfortable actually considering building there ourselves, so. The second thing that was mentioned was conservation. This land has had signs on it off and on for 14 years, and not once in 14 years has the word conservation come up on this property, not once. We heard it at the, from the public meeting, and then we heard it again on July 14th. My son and I went down to put, originally, no trespassing signs, there was a lot of unauthorized use of, of that lot. And Ms. Lonas was parked there with a person beside her in a van, and they were having a quick chat, and when Ms. Lonas left, the lady approached me and asked if I was also part of the land conservation group trying to turn this into green space. In three weeks, I've heard the word conservation on a piece of property that our family has owned for 36 years and paid taxes and made improvements. We were a little surprised, to say the least, so I, I thought it was important to speak to that tonight. This property has been for sale for 15 years. My husband made a difficult decision to sell this property in 2006, and we have slowly made improvements on that lot over the years and felt it was in our right to ask for rezoning. In a note that I got from the town, the proposed rezoning from general to commercial, two-unit residential, I just wanted to show some of the other flood mitigation walls along the La Hav that have been done. Does not permit residential development because it's general commercial, but the land use conforms to the land use designation for the property on the future land use map. The property is located within the La Hav River Development Agreement, and we understand that if we get to the development portion of this, that we actually have to go through a development agreement. We know we have to do a study in flood mitigation. We're willing to do those things. This gives possibly three, six families an opportunity to live close to downtown. And we wouldn't take it lightly that we would just put someone on a piece of property knowing that they're going to flood out. In fact, when the lower end of La Hav Street, where the pumping station is, has flooded in the past, they generally use the Croson Show parking lots to park the fire trucks and emergency vehicles until the water dissipates on this. We understand we would have to build up, we understand we would have to have grass, and make sure that our zones are well within not allowing flooding to take over the street, and we understand there's an agreement that we have to go into with the town when we enter this. So with all the improvements, the demolition, the older buildings, the erosion, flood mitigation will, will be built, we pay taxes, business and vacant land tax, and we felt that it was well within our rights to simply request a zoning change, which, which is what tonight is. We understand we're not in a development agreement. And we understand that it, excuse me, it fits within the town planning map for zoning, and that we are simply in the application stages. And we thank you all for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, does council have any? Does council have any questions for the applicant? Any questions, council? Not at this time?
I can bring up one.
Okay, Council Thorburn.
I happened to be there, I think Lee Whitehead was chief when we had the big ice jam, I think it was in the late 90s.
Yes.
Yep.
And that was the second one.
That was the second one. There was one in 76.
In 76, I was down the other place where the bridge went over as well. Anyway, it looked like you've done a lot of work to your property to try and eliminate that possibility. And what happened then was a nice surge and you couldn't control that, no matter how high that was at the time.
No. And in fact, in order to mitigate any of that, at the time, we lost 15 to 20 feet of land when it was washed away. That's why the wall was put in now. So we weren't allowed to have those riparian rights against their call back to get those 15 to 20 feet back, but we made sure that the wall was put in place to stop any further erosion.
May I also add that when that ice came up, oh, we did not get water on that property though?
Just a little bit in the warehouse on the river side.
But I'll just give you one little tidbit. There was a house right on the, and it was flooded. As a matter of fact, the light was still on in the basement when we was there with pump trucks trying to get the water out and the light was still on, the power was still on.
Yep.
And it was flooded.
Yep.
No, that's.
Well, we remember that. So we aren't intending to put basements or claw into the wall that we built. It's actually on, on the.
Anybody building today is going to put a basement.
Foundation, yeah. Just slabs, slab homes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
Thank you, council. Thanks.
Thank you. The next is, we go in specific order, comments from the public. We start with those in favor. If there's any members of the public who are in favor of the rezoning. I don't know if we have folks on teams joining us? I'll just ask one more time if anyone is here to speak from the public in favor of Okay, then we go to those opposed. And I know we do have a presentation, so I'll ask Rosemary to come to the podium, please. And state your name, full name, please. And just a reminder that everyone speaking has a maximum of 10 minutes.
Great. Thanks so much. My name's Rosemary Lounas. I live at 671 La Havre Street and I am a business owner here in the town as well as living there. My husband grew up in that house, so he's known the O'Neills for most of his life, which is, you know, they've been great neighbors for us. I do have this presentation that demonstrates a greater flooding risk than what has been currently demonstrated this afternoon. Excuse me, I'll just go through that. Should I use this clipboard? Yeah, okay. All right. So 2003 was the last major flood that we had in town when the ice collected up in the back of our homes here on the street. And there was approximately 12 feet of ice that was packed up behind my yard on the other side of my fence. And when that broke through, you know, car-sized chunks landed in the river and we were evacuated for about a week from our home. Our basement filled with water, with mixed seawater as well as fresh water. And at the time, we had insurance, so all of our utilities had to be replaced, washer and dryer, furnace, all that kind of stuff. Of course, we know that all of this land has been infilled. The house, our house was built in the early 30s and so, you know, the river is still there regardless whether the rocks are in place or not, the river is still pushing up underneath. In fact, we have two sump pumps in our basement that run 24 hours a day. When we have small power outages in town for, you know, various regions, storms, ice and things like that, within 20 minutes, our six-foot deep basement is filled with water. So it's a bit of concern to us that there could potentially be more people on the riverbank seeing that same kind of risk. Obviously, we have some geological issues and the high tide, of course, is the main thing that is our concern because since I've lived there in 2001, we've been marking where the high tide line is and it has exceeded approximately two feet since 2001 on high tide full moon. So there's definitely issues there. And according to all the geological studies that we've done, there's really no capacity for the riverbank itself, for the riparian zone, to be that spongy layer like we would like it to be in non-developed spaces. So the flood risk is increased. And here we see, my interpretation of these studies that the town has done says a 99.5% flood probability, especially in this zone. So I'm not sure, these are direct quotes from the study listed below in table 2.2. Again, and here is the rate flooding for this region. Of course, the mall sits a little lower than the topography up at our end on the north end of the street. And here again, we see, you know, this experience happening. Again, these are documents from the town's website stating that there's sea level rise, obviously in this area, since it's tied to the base of Silver's Hill, 0.5 meters to Okay, so this is just a summary of the intention as we understand it. And then just a summary of all of those charts from the flood rates. And I think you have this document in your files as well, so you can read all the fine print if you haven't already been through all of the town documents on the website or in the master plan. Okay, so this is my main concern right now is that, you know, I wouldn't have a business if it wasn't for development, right? My specialty is restoring ecosystems and so I'm constantly, you know, on a daily basis, seeing landscapes that have been denuded or developed for home building or other infrastructures and homeowners spending tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars with my company to restore the riparian zone so that it has the capacity to absorb and mitigate flood risk. And this February, I was given this letter, came in early December, I see, from my insurance company saying that they would no longer cover my flood insurance because, you know, they've noted that we're in the flood plain. And so for several months, I scoured all of the other insurance companies that may, you know, insure my family and no one will flood us because we're in the flood plain. So no one will rate us or give us insurance because we're in the flood plain. So now I sit in a home that doesn't have flood insurance, which is pretty intense for me because we have a basement in that infilled land, of course. I know the O'Neills are saying that, you know, modern technology would be that they would be on a slab of some sort, which is great and fine. My worry is that we have potentially six families living in a space where you can't get insurance. That doesn't make sense to me. That sounds very risky to me, in fact. And so when I call other insurance companies, they're like, that's the first question they ask firstly. Then they ask when the last major flood was and I say 2003. That isn't long enough in history for them to say that isn't a risk anymore. And of course, we know all the current research and science around climate change saying that tides will be higher, rain will be heavier, snow melt will be faster. All of these things wrapped up together, including the hardening of our shoreline, are going to mitigate more flooding. That's just science and makes perfect sense. When we get into insurance cancellation, that's really scary, right? So back in 2003, we were able to make a call on that insurance and have all of our infrastructure repaired and replaced. That was, you know, washer and dryer, furnace, oil tank, all those things replaced and cared for and now I don't have that capacity anymore. And as I mentioned earlier, within 20 minutes of a power outage, my basement is full and yeah, that's pretty risky. In the 80s, before I lived here, of course, this is just hearsay, but the last major flood where water was actually on our main floor, there was three feet of water inside our house, in our living room. And so Greg and his family had quite a mess to clean up. And so saying that, you know, the high rise and everything isn't going to affect even a home on a slab, I think is premature to the research and study around climate change and the international policies around climate change and flood risk mitigation. So that's pretty scary. And I mean, if there was to be development, you know, great. Hopefully, we can work as good neighbors and repair the riparian zone, et cetera. But why would we even consider that? Why are we even considering the change of zoning when we know that that just invites homeownership into that area when it's a flood plain? Like, that doesn't make sense. The rest of the town is getting ready for mitigating flood. I mean, the master plan and the zoning mapping that we did back in 2014 was a huge exercise. I think it took us over a year to actually work on that document together. And at that time, we discussed things around the La Havre River and how when old buildings on King Street especially became derelict, that we would work together to try to find some way to turn those into conservation lands or other uses that weren't putting private property at risk of climate change. And yet, here we are, you know, a few years later, backtracking on all of that hard work we did back then in 2014. It just doesn't make sense that we spent a huge amount of time thinking about the environment back then and today we're flipping back. We've done a ton of research on this prospect and I hope that you'll take the time to research and think about that before you make your decision. As I say, I work in development, you know, I'm renaturalizing landscapes all the time and certainly it would be lovely to work right next door for the O'Neills if that was to happen and get some good riparian plantings in there to mitigate that issue. But if not, then, you know, that's the end. Thank you.
Well, that was 10 minutes to the second.
To the second, there you go.
Well, thank you. Questions from any members of council on that presentation?
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on virtually that wishes to speak opposed to this? Hearing not, is there anyone else on the call that wants to make any comments regarding this presentation or this application, rather? No? Any other questions from council?
Can the public ask a question to council?
Yes, only to council, not to staff, but yes. Yep, come down to the microphone though, please.
I'm sorry, I was just listening to the presentation. Do I understand that Ms. Lounas worked with council in 2014 to look at doing conservation on our land back then? Is that what I understood?
So not with the town, we went through a plan with citizens. Just trying to think if that was back.
That was part of the plan review process.
Yeah, yeah. So there were a number of members of the public that worked with us on that.
Okay. She mentioned you had all worked together and I thought it might have been a conflict. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So I'll just, the way we're going to do this is I'm going to, in a moment, close the public hearing. Council will then resume and we will debate, deliberate and vote on this. So just in my closing remarks, I want to just again note that the decision of council, regardless of what the decision is of council, is, can be appealed to the UARB for 14 days.
Is now exiting.
Yeah, so there's a 14-day appeal period. Last chance for questions from council. So I will declare the public hearing closed and then council will resume and we will now go into, into the council portion of this topic. What is the, is the will of council? Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Or does someone have anything to add? Awkward silence. This is why we're not on the radio. Would you like a motion? I'd like a motion. Yes, let's get a motion on the floor.
I'm with the town council for the town of Bridgewater, give second and final consideration to the proposed map amendments, amendments of the land use bylaw to rezone 677 La Havre Street from general commercial C5 to two-unit residential R2 as contained in appendix A of document 21-080B.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Caldwell, I saw your hand first. Councilor Caldwell?
I'd just like to clarify that the concerns raised by Ms. Lounas hurdle would be addressed, those concerns would be addressed through the development agreement process. Should we reach that point, correct?
Correct, yes. So this is just to deal with the rezoning, not to deal with any proposed development? You're right, those, there's conditions that would have to be met under the La Havre Development Agreement area. Yeah, absolutely correct. Deputy Mayor?
And just to confirm the timeline of reviewing this as a conservation zone, it's years in the future? Plural, years?
Unless council wants to pull it out and have it reviewed independently or separately from the plan review, which is, you may do that if you wish to direct staff to do that, it would occur as part of the plan review. So we'll be delivering a plan to you before the end of the fiscal year. That is a proposal on how we approach the plan review and the timelines for that, but it's a couple of years.
Other comments? Councilor Thorburn?
I brought this up at the first reading about the flood plain and other properties not being developed because of that. But this in no way gives them permission to build. We're just doing the zoning, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So I want to be perfectly clear that we're not approving any development.
Right.
We are just approving the rezoning.
Right.
That has to go through, yeah, its own hurdles. Yes, thank you. No further comment? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you. So we will move to our, and I want to just thank everyone for speaking. I know it's never easy to come before council. We try not to be an intimidating group and I'll tell you, I'm much more comfortable on this side than I am staying at the podium. The last few times I've had to present to council, it can be nerve-wracking, so I just appreciate you taking the time to come and articulate your thoughts. So again, it's not easy, so thank you for that. So we get to go into another public hearing. So I will just open that public hearing and note that this is the second reading for the urban commercial C3 zone amendments to the land use bylaw. All statutory requirements have been met and that, a reminder again, that council's decision is governed by the municipal planning strategy. And I see Nelson is still hanging around, so I'll turn this over to the planner to walk us through this one.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So yes, this is the presentation for the second reading in public hearing of the urban commercial zone housekeeping amendments. So staff initiated the following housekeeping amendments to the urban commercial zone. The first is to prevent residential conversions within a building constructed prior to August 27, 1975, up to a maximum of two units. And to remove the requirement for multi-unit residential development to exceed 3,250 square meters in per square area to be permitted by a development agreement. So the urban commercial zone has 49 properties throughout town. So, the urban commercial zone has 49 properties throughout town, and so many that the land use bylaw, the amendments would affect all the entire zone, meaning all properties zoned urban commercial. Similar to the last presentation I just made, the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw guide and stuff in the, when it comes to processing and initiating applications for rezonings. So, the municipal planning strategy outlines general provisions to each zone, policies to shape development, and the land use bylaw carries out those policies. On the future land use map, properties zoned urban commercial are designated as general commercial. That is the same for C4 and C5 zones as well. And here you can see all of the properties throughout town that have that urban commercial So, for the first housekeeping amendment policy, C3, sorry, C31C and the land use bylaw section 5.3.2.3, that's pretty deep in the land use bylaw. So, staff found an inconsistency between the policy and the land use bylaw. And as I mentioned, I think in the first slide, the consistency is around setting a minimum gross floor area for development to be able to undergo a development agreement process. So, to ensure that the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw are aligned, staff posed that we remove that minimum gross floor area requirement for development to be permitted by a development agreement. For the residential amendment, this amendment would permit residential conversions in the C3 zone according to existing zoning standards. The land use bylaw definition for residential conversions is the alteration of, but not demolition, of a residential building to increase the number of municipal dwelling units. And the maximum that would be enabled in the C3 zone would be two units. So, residential conversions are permitted in eight residential and commercial zones. The proposed change would apply to the 10 legal unperforming residential properties in the C3 zone, most of which are single unit dwellings. Staff considered that oversight, that residential versions were not permitted in the C3 zone in 2014, including municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw overhaul. Proposed change would provide a densification for legal unperforming residential properties with an increase in one unit or two units potentially. So, the key objective statements here are around controlling land use for to ensure compatibility and minimizing conflicts, also ensuring compact development to maximize the town's shared infrastructure, and enabling a full range of housing options as these two housekeeping amendments revolve around residential development. So in terms of IM6, sanitary wastewater, any development that would occur as a result of these amendments would be subject to the wastewater amendment by law. Most properties zoned C3 are located on arterial and collector streets, which are intended for higher volumes of traffic. Therefore, light densification would result in minimal impact on traffic volumes, and environmental constraints would be considered on a site-by-site basis, depending on where the development is proposed. So, Policy IM2 states that amendments to the land use bylaw must be consistent with municipal planning strategy, and that is one of the reasons why we're undertaking the amendment to cover the minimum gross floor area requirement. So, that amendment certainly complies with IM2. And Policy IM3 states the House shall consider both proposed use and the impact of other uses included in the C3 zone. And for the C3 zone, residential development is already permitted under several circumstances, including by-site plan approval. And so enabling it through a development agreement process doesn't alter that. Policies for residential development, so because residential development is already permitted in the C3 zone, staff believe, or based on analysis, have made the assessment that enabling further residential development wouldn't cause any conflict in land uses. Further housing types would be enabled, including multi-unit residential through this amendment, and densification would occur for the residential conversions that may be undertaken as a result of this amendment. And similarly, for commercial development, there's not much conflict to commercial zones introducing residential development, and it's already enabled under the C3 zone. No zone standards will be changed as a result of these housekeeping amendments. As a right development, would include residential conversions with this amendment, and development by development agreement would be allowed for properties that do not exceed that minimum gross floor area threshold. So there wasn't a public participation meeting for this application because it is a housekeeping amendment, so according to legislation, no public participation meeting is required in this circumstance. And the process that occurred was in line with legislation. And the next step would be the publication of the amendments, which will start a 14-day appeal period to the UARB. Staff recommend that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed text amendments to the land use bylaw. And that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Wonderful, thank you, Nelson. Any questions from council? Kind of run through this before, so it's pretty straightforward. Do you want a motion? No, we have to work our way through the little public hearing. Are there any comments from the public in favor? I don't think we have any public attending for this particular topic. Any other comments from the public? There's no one online for this one, Patrick? No, thank you. Any further remarks from council? No? So I will close the public hearing, and we will return to council session, where I am looking for a motion. Please, Councilor Thorburn.
Okay, Your Worship. I would move that Council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the text amendments of the land use bylaws as contained in Appendix A of Document 21-065C.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Fager. Discussion? I'm going to add one thing, then, and that is that this is Nelson's last meeting with us. He is going to Barcelona for his second graduate degree? One's not enough.
I just have an undergrad, so I'm going back for more. But, yeah, not that I would educate you.
Nelson, let me just say, you've been a very valuable member of the team. It's been a pleasure to have you among our staff team. You'll be missed, and we wish you well, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to go back to one of your earlier statements about it being scary to present in front of council, I definitely had those jitters, and I had to kind of calm myself down as I have kind of matured into my position. But yeah, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving in the administration. I worked on a really broad range of things, and yeah, I really enjoy all of it. It's a great, great community, and really excited to see how things go. This is lots of exciting stuff happening.
Thank you, Nelson. Best of luck. We have a mover and a seconder for their discussion. Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, 6.3 Development Agreement Application and Notice of Public Participation Meeting. And I see Ms. Childs is headed to the podium. Let's do this one.
Thank you. This one is very brief, but staff received an application on June 26 for a development agreement to construct a 35-unit residential development at 102 and 108 Aberdeen Road and 14 Hurdle Drive. The subject properties are located in the urban commercial, or the C3 zone, and in the C3 zone, multi-unit residential development requires a development agreement. The intent of the applicant is to consolidate the three properties into one. 102 Aberdeen Road and 14 Hurdle Drive are currently vacant, and 108 Aberdeen Road contains a single-unit residential dwelling. Like I said, the application is to construct a 35-unit residential development. The intent is for it to be three stories and comprised of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And the applicant also intends to maintain the single-unit dwelling currently located at 108 Aberdeen Road. So, an initial review has been done by community development staff, but the proposal requires review by engineering and community development staff against the MPS and all of the relevant policies. And a public participation meeting is scheduled for August 18 at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, so people can learn more about the proposal at this meeting and ask any questions and provide any comments they have.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that? So again, just a reminder to the public, August 18, here in Town Hall, there's a public meeting. Invited everyone to come and learn more. Thank you. Our next item is First Reading Municipal Planning Strategy Amendments Act of Transportation
So, this application is for amendments to the municipal planning strategy, and it has come from staff. The proposed amendments reflect the new Act of Transportation Plan that was endorsed by council in 2020. So the vision for the Act of Transportation, or AT, plan is that walking, wheeling, and cycling are safe, convenient, and enjoyable ways to move around Bridgewater for users of all ages and abilities, and are a common part of everyday life. And the three overarching themes of the action items that are proposed in there are expand and enhance the active transportation network, adopt policy to support active transportation, and encourage walking, rolling, and cycling for people of all ages and abilities. The plan also provides design guidance for the development of future active transportation infrastructure in Bridgewater. So, the amendments that are being proposed are looking to update MAP 5 of the municipal planning strategy. It's the Active Transportation Network map, and also accompanying policies and some context text. The reason for these amendments is to update the municipal planning strategy pursuant to Policy T15. And that policy states that it shall be a policy of council to update and maintain MAP 5, Active Transportation Network, which designates all AT routes in town and identifies where AT infrastructure improvements are needed on existing streets. So as there is a new AT network map, the MPS should be updated to reflect that. This is the existing AT map that is currently in the municipal planning strategy. It shows different prioritization levels for different routes proposed across Bridgewater. And this is the updated map, and it shows some of the present AT routes in town, like different sidewalks, and identifies where AT infrastructure improvements are recommended on existing streets, and the type of AT facilities proposed. So in addition to replacing the map, Policy T14, T16, and some context text in Sections 11.2.5 and 14.3.2 are proposed to be amended to reflect the new plan. Policy T14 would require an amendment to change the name and date of the plan, so simply changing it from Active Transportation and Connectivity Plan 2008 to Active Transportation Plan 2020. Policy T16 would require an amendment to also change the name and date, so same as the last policy. And for contextual purposes, amendments would also be required to update the accompanying descriptive text. This includes changing the title and the date where applicable, and updating the description in Section 14.3.2, Active Transportation Infrastructure, to reflect the new plan. And these changes would provide a summary of the plan document and what the new network map shows. There was a public participation meeting scheduled for July 21 at 6:00 PM. There were no subject properties for this amendment, as it was an amendment to MPS policies, so no individual notices were issued to property owners, but an advertisement was placed in the South Shore Breaker, and the meeting was advertised through the town's social media channels. No members of the public attended. So in looking at policy to support this amendment, the MPS contains 15 objective statements to guide the policy. And of particular importance to this are encouraging compact development to maximize the town's shared infrastructure and to promote healthy, close-knit neighborhoods; support a functional and sustainable transportation network by improving street connectivity and supporting a range of transportation options; improve the pedestrian experience by promoting safe, accessible, and inviting streets and public spaces; promote the use of sustainable infrastructure and green building design in new development; and undertake adaptation and mitigation measures to prepare the community for the impacts of climate change. So the implementation policies were reviewed, which included Policy IM1, and this policy states when council is to require an amendment to the MPS, and that includes housekeeping amendments, which this application is considered based on the proposed changes. Staff also reviewed other policies in the MPS related to active transportation, so the following that are on the slide were reviewed, and T14 and 16 were the ones that would be amended. So, for T12, these amendments will provide the Bridgewater Active Transportation Advisory Committee, the Policy Foundation, to continue their educational and awareness efforts. For Policy T15, these amendments will update the map, the Active Transportation Network map, with the recently endorsed network map in the new plan, keeping Policy T15 up to date. For T18, these amendments maintain the former National Railway Right-of-Way, known as the Centennial Trail, as a dedicated active transportation corridor, so that's still kept in the updated map. For T19, these amendments update the Policy Foundation for establishing links between the Centennial Trail and adjacent public spaces and public facilities. And as a summary, the proposed amendments include the replacement of MAP 5, text amendments to policies T14 and 16 to reflect the new Active Transportation Plan, and some changes to accompanying descriptive text, including the title and date change for the new plan, and what the new plan focuses on. So staff recommend that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the amendments to the municipal planning strategies, and contain in Appendix A for the AT plan, and that Town Council schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled meeting on September 13.
Thank you. Questions from council on that? Presentation was that good. No questions?
Perfect.
Perfect. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Colwell, thank you.
I move that Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the amendments to the municipal planning strategy to reflect the new Act of Transportation Plan 2020 as contained in Appendix A of Document 21-105, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on September 13, 2021.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Fager. Discussion? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We are down to reports and recommendations. Placemaking projects from Development Nova Scotia, Nova Scotia Business and Labor Coalition.
I'm just going to stay here.
We timed it perfectly.
I know, it's great. So, I'll just give a little rundown. No presentation for this one, but just a rundown of the report that I provided. So, Bridgewater is currently part of two placemaking projects that are being done through Development Nova Scotia. So, the first one was called the Rural Placemaking Challenge, and in 2019, the town of Bridgewater was one of three finalists for this challenge. And through this, the winner would receive $10,000 to bring an idea to life. And staff brought forward the idea of the public backyard project at Shipyard's Landing, which focused on helping turn the park into a more vibrant space where everyone can feel like they belong through improvements and just activate the space. And more recently, Bridgewater was also chosen as a community to take part in a community-led placemaking program created by the Nova Scotia Business and Economic Labor Coalition in partnership with Development Nova Scotia, through which the town will receive $50,000 in funding to execute the program. So, the term placemaking, it means a collaborative process to shape the public realm in order to maximize shared value for residents and visitors. And there is a method called the lighter, quicker, cheaper method, which is often used, and it focuses on low-cost improvements and quick implementation. And the outcomes focus on making places more attractive, inclusive, and turning a space that people just kind of pass by to a place that people actually want to linger. And so the focus for the second one, what we're calling the Nez Bledh Project, that's the acronym, is focused on tactical urbanism projects. And so examples of this in placemaking include things like movable seating, bright and inviting colors, interactive artwork in different capacities, kind of cozy lighting, additional shade, new enclosures, things like that, that are focused on physical changes rather than events, and not necessarily large infrastructure changes. So strong placemaking projects are usually in a location with existing pedestrian traffic, and they focus on something called the Power of 10, which is a concept used to enhance placemaking efforts. And the idea behind this is that places thrive when users have a range of reasons, so 10-plus reasons, to stay in this area. And that might be something like places to sit, playgrounds to enjoy, art to see, music to hear, food to eat, just a bunch of different things in one space. So for the first project, the Shipyard's Landing project, staff have taken that initial vision from 2019 and molded it to become a little bit more achievable and focused. from 2019 and molded it to become a little bit more achievable and focused. So the focus is really on procuring a variety of seating and some lighting, so just kind of that lighter, quicker, cheaper method to give more, a variety of use in that space that already does have some activity, but just kind of strengthen that a little bit more. And there's no set end date for this project, but it's kind of a completed as soon as possible, and it's expected that it should be implemented in around September, but there's no set date. And the second project, the one with the Nova Scotia Business and Economic Labor Coalition, they created this placemaking program to improve public spaces, and the project is focused on pandemic recovery around main streets or downtown streets. So Development Nova Scotia will be providing guidance and resources to help move that project forward. And funding is being provided through the Nova Scotia COVID Response Council at Dalhousie with additional sources being finalized. And at this point, staff has ideas of what possible placemaking projects could happen, who can be included, different, like the general population, but also specific organizations or groups, and possible locations in the downtown. And so we're working on moving those forward, but placemaking is really community-based, so no ideas are really set in stone. We're going to start working on some community engagement to help shape those projects and the process. So we're currently in the kind of planning outreach and design phase in the months of July and August. And then the intent is, it's a very short timeframe, the intent is to implement it, these projects and initiatives in August and September, and then we all come back for a group evaluation in October. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that.
Questions? Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds wonderful. Just, I hope we can go as quick as we can, because the season is going to be, we're going to be blinking and we're going to be in the fall and migrating back indoors. So I look forward to seeing that appear. Great, keep us posted, please.
Yep.
Our next item is 9.2, Transit Extension to Osprey Village. I know this comes up quite a bit, so I don't know who's...
It's me.
It's you?
Yep.
All right. See who's going to make a quick presentation to us.
Yes. So if council remembers back in February, a request was received from the District of Lunenburg requesting that council give consideration to extending the Bridgewater Transit to Exit 12. And at that meeting, council directed that staff have a meeting with representatives from the District of Lunenburg to discuss the request and determine what they were thinking of in terms of routes and discuss some possible scenarios with that. So staff did make a request for them to provide details with respects to the route, and that is included with the report to show you what they were proposing, which is to essentially bring transit out to Osprey Village and the commercial developments and the whole senior development and municipal building within Osprey Village. The staff reviewed that request. We also met with the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board, and we wanted to meet with them because there was some concern that extending transit outside of town could create some issues with respects to operation and remove some of the flexibility that we have having transit within the town boundary. We can control routes, service levels, fares, we're flexible to change on a dime, whereas when you regulate it, that happens when you cross municipal boundaries and provide the service outside of the town boundary, there was concern that that flexibility wouldn't be there. So we did meet with representatives from the board. We had a number of questions for them, and I think it was a very valuable time, and came to understand that there is the ability to accommodate the flexibility, we just have to prepare for that within our business plan or budget that we present to them to indicate there are certain things we want to be able to do, and this is kind of how we would allocate that. So we could have free ride days and change routes based on construction or road closures and stuff like that, that we were concerned we couldn't do without getting a quick approval from the board to do that. So those concerns have been minimized compared to what they were. So it really came down to can we provide the service? And what was determined is that to include that within our existing service, we compromise our service levels. So we have an hour loop, and based on the analysis that staff have done, going over that would impact the rideability, like it would impact our ridership. In fact, that's probably as high as we want to go is that one-hour loop in terms of being able to provide that. You get on the bus and return back where you are is an hour. It'd be better if we could be less. So there was some concern with doing that. Our transit supervisor looked at the route and timed it and figured it would add another 16 minutes onto our service level. So there were some concerns that staff had with respects to that. We do believe that there's a possibility of looking at extending the service with perhaps a little bit of variation in the route that could provide better service to more dense areas, including the town. And for that reason, what staff is suggesting is that rather than just considering that extension, that 16-minute extension in isolation of looking at what the possibility is to provide a better level of service to other areas, because it is a low-density area, where they're proposing, there's no homes. So how do we get that ridership to residents and that type of thing as well as service to commercial area? We're suggesting that there would have to be a feasibility study done that would look at the possible routes that could be provided, would consider the future needs of the town in terms of transit and services. So we received a presentation last week that showed that as we build out Glen Allen and as we look at Exit 12A, we have to modify our transit routes. So all those things have to be taken into consideration about how we're going to deliver that when we consider delivering transit outside of the town boundary. It suggested that council respond back to the District of Lunenburg and indicate that the next step in order for council to assess whether or not this can be provided is to look at a feasibility study. That would, and staff have some criteria noted here that we probably want to have included within the feasibility study, but it's not an exhaustive list. And we're suggesting that staff would be involved in the development of the scope for that feasibility study to ensure that we covered off everything we felt essential for transit. So it would look at population and demands, community engagement, citizens for public transit have a lot of information as well, destinations, vehicle options, bus stop locations, and cost, et cetera, that we would want to have considered to determine what's the best way to deliver transit, particularly if we are to consider an extension of that. So that's what's being suggested, that if council wishes to proceed to that next step, there's nothing to say that you have to proceed to that next step. But if you wish to, we're suggesting that feasibility study to ensure that we don't compromise the future service within the town in terms of its expansion and accommodate this request as well.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Thorburn?
To keep the hour timeframe and trying to look after MODL's needs and certainly Exit 12, it almost looks like we're going to get to the possibility where we're going to have to have two buses.
Yep.
And they will intersect somewheres where your ride's only going to be an hour, but in a certain direction.
And that would be part of the feasibility study. We're identifying that we can't accommodate this without additional resources right now.
Right, yeah.
But how do we best service our area? Does it make sense just to do that quick run out to Osprey Village or look at another loop?
Yeah.
Those are things that we'd want to have assessed to determine what makes the most sense.
I think we've been consistent with that throughout this whole transit discussion with MODL, is that they have to look at exactly what they want. We speak to people in town from New Germany who would like to see the bus go all the way up to New Germany, bring them to Exit 12, then take them the rest of the way to the mall, and then take them all the way back. So in my opinion, the feasibility study is required for MODL to know which of its citizens can it collect by bus to maximize the passengers for their portion of the service. We've had this question as well, like should it go around, pick up students from Parkview? Can you do that loop? I know one of our original proposals was two buses running on each side of the river, kind of intersecting at the mall. What does that look like if it goes to Exit 12? But the burden can't be solely on the town when you're talking about the bus leaving town to service some other municipalities. So I think this, for me, assuming council wants to move forward with this, I think this will answer the questions that we have and the questions that NOD has.
And the intent is for the, in terms of the feasibility study, was to look at how we accommodate their request to Osprey Village. So that's all they're asking for right now, is how do we accommodate that and still maximize that service? So if we're sending a bus out there and we want to pick up residents or riders along the way, then maybe we look at that loop or in another direction, but it needs to be analyzed, because I think it's probably a little, just that 16-minute is perhaps a little short-sighted in terms of how we could get the most of that service.
Well, and again, I think we've been consistent with that. It's not as simple as just, excuse me, popping the bus out to Walmart and back, because then, and you've noted it in the report, then the bus arrives at the same bus stops at different times all day, 9 o'clock, 10:16, 11:30, like it just, when we launched, and that was how the route, if you recall, our route was always an hour and a bit, and it threw people off, because you constantly had to memorize your stop every single hour versus now you can go, I use this stop, and every day it's at six minutes past the hour, every single hour, which I think directly led to an increase in ridership, because it was just easier to remember. I passed a lot of people when we first launched who waited an hour for the bus, because, well, yesterday I got there and it was at 10:15. Well, today you missed it, because it was there at 10:13, or 11:13, and now you've got to wait till 12 whatever. So I think this will, that'll answer a bunch of questions. Deputy Mayor?
Do we feel we would have done this feasibility study regardless of whether this request had come in and what would have been the timeline, like one or two years out, maybe?
Yeah, I would say that as Exit 12A would get developed out and Glen Allen, it was identified in that study that our routes would, you know, to best service that area, but it may have been a few years out before we saw that pressure or demand.
Right.
So this really prompted it at this point in time.
Do you have a ballpark of what this might cost?
I don't. The ballpark, price?
Of ours?
Of this, yeah. No, not too sure.
Okay.
Yeah. They'd have to scope that out and perhaps talk to some providers to see what that would be.
But doesn't that come down to as well if they just want to talk about Exit 12 versus if they do want to talk about, you know, does the scope increase to New Germany or going around to...
Or...
Because they get the pressure from Parkview students, that, you know, the majority of Parkview students are from the municipality of District of Lunenburg, so they would get that pressure for, you know, we want to get the bus that we can access jobs either in Osprey Village or...
Yeah, so we're kind of looking at this like you would say our water system, right? If there's a request for an extension to an area, say, outside of town, we want to make sure that that extension doesn't compromise our future expansions in town. So what we're saying here is the same thing, is we want to make sure that, you know, if we look at the 16-minute ride in isolation, we might come up with a little tiny bus, you know, a little van that picks up and brings to the bus stop, but that could be the very short-term solution to something that in a few years' time, we're looking at a bus. So it might make sense to kind of look at that now, because we have other ridership areas, like it's a bigger picture than just that. In terms of, if they want to see it expanded beyond Osprey Village to go into New Germany or some of the more dense areas, that's not what we're considering here. I know the Citizens for Public Transit have been rather active in that arena in terms of getting, trying to encourage the municipal units to partner on regional transit, so that could start opening that door a bit to have that conversation. And I believe Town Council has said in the past that we're willing to look at that, but we really need our other partners at the table to do that as well. So they may very well, when we say let's do a feasibility study, come back and suggest that they expand the territory for which transit could cover, but...
But I think that's why the motion that's in the floor is clear that we need to be involved in the process.
Yeah.
So that we're not impacting our service negatively.
That's right.
But also, it would be nice to kind of future-proof it, so if we are looking at some kind of future expansion of Bridgewater Transit, that whatever happens next, if there is a bus that just goes to Exit 12 and back, that it does have the ability to then do whatever we're looking at together down the road, five, 10 years.
Yeah, and we're suggesting that this study would be at the cost of the District of Lunenburg as well, given that it's their request that prompts it. So they would be involved in the scope of work, but we would need to be involved in that too, given that it is our transit system.
Other comments? Counselor Caldwell?
I'd simply like to add that it would be nice if this was a stepping stone towards a more regional transit model, and so it doesn't sound like that's in the works now as part of this feasibility study, but that would be nice if it at least lead us down that road.
That would be nice. I have a, my sense is that it's going to be piecemeal, just because the original goal was regional transit, not independent transit, and the town just, we couldn't wait any longer. And I think the municipality, District of Lunenburg, to their credit, is also saying we can't wait any longer. Now, maybe this will then tip it so that the other municipalities in the area will say, well, if you're going to go to a feasibility study, we'd like to kind of piggyback and maybe have a couple that are running, but at the end of the day, it has to be, we have to have a seat at the table so that we know what the impact is on ours. But regional transit should be the, it should be the end game. It should be more than just getting people to a couple of stores outside of town and back. Yeah. Counselor McDonald?
I was on the Joint Transit Committee, and we did some feasibility studies, and we couldn't make it work, plain and simple, it was not going to work. And I think this will be really interesting in determining whether the success relies on the density of population or the destination. Is it the shopping, you know, can it be supported just by shopping and that kind of traffic, or do you have to have the density of population? Because that information, I think, would be really important in determining where other branches could go and where it's just, you know, it's not going to be worth another feasibility study, because if it's just going to shopping and there's no people living in the area, maybe it just can't work. So I think this will be really important information.
Yeah, for sure. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Fugier?
Yes, Your Worshipful Make a Motion. That Council for the town of Bridgewater requests the municipality of the District of Lunenburg conduct a feasibility study at its cost to determine options for a service extension and require that the town of Bridgewater agree to the scope of the feasibility study and be involved in the process.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Well, you were quick on that one.
Had to be.
Pickleball hand up quick.
That's right.
Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next one is RFP 2021-05, Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Tender for the Biogas Flare Stack Replacement. I just wanted to say that. I could have just said 9.3 and welcomed. This is becoming down.
Good evening, everyone. In June 2021, we came to council requesting emergency funding for the replacement and engineering services to replace our biogas flare stack. Since then, in July 2021, we issued RFP 2021-05, Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Tender Package for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Biogas Flare Stack Replacement. We received two compliant bids, and this evening we are coming to council to look for a recommendation to award to the highest overall RFP consultant, CBC L Limited, and they had a price of $67,756.85, HST included, and that is $61,444.27 net HST, which gives us the design, commissioning, and also 40 hours of construction, question period. Any questions?
Questions from council? They're just in awe of what a short presentation that was. We don't know what to do now. Hearing that, and someone prepared to make a motion. Counselor McDonald?
I have moved the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP 2021-05, Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Tender Package for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Biogas Flare Stack Replacement to CBCL Limited for an estimated cost of $67,756.85, including HST, $61,444.27 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Further comment?
Thank you. Second to by, Deputy Mayor, further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Tender 21-02E Wastewater Treatment Plant Boiler Replacement. Mr. Feener?
Thank you. Staff issued tender 21-02E in June to replace the wastewater treatment plant dual fuel boiler. Thirty-eight packages were taken out and on the closing date of July 30th, the town received four submissions. The equipment is approximately 30 years old and we've been experiencing ongoing issues and challenges keeping it in service. The tender considered two options, fuel oil and biogas combination, which is the existing setup, and propane and biogas, as well as five provisional items, including the replacement of three circulating pumps, an extended warranty and a maintenance agreement. The approved budget is $400,000. Because of the reduced greenhouse gas emissions, reduced environmental risk of propane versus fuel oil, and the reduced maintenance costs, staff are recommending the propane biogas option. And that council award the tender to the lowest price submission from Maritime Pressure Works, inclusive of all the provisional items, for a total price of $281,325.04 net HST.
Right. Thank you. Comments or questions from council? And quite straightforward. I like hearing the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that Council of Tam, Town of Bridgewater award tender 21-02E Wastewater Treatment Plant Boiler Replacement to Maritime Pressure Works Limited to supply and install one new boiler package, option two, plus provisional items number three, number four, number five, number six, and seven for the wastewater treatment plant as proposed in its tender submission dated July the 30th, 2021. And that this supply engineering resides for a total price of $310,227.45 including HST or $281,325.04 net HST.
Thank you. Second to by, Councilor Caldwell was the one that caught my eye first. Must be the color of the shirt. That's why. Further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is tender 21-05E King Street Cross Culvert Replacement.
For the trifecta from the engineering department?
I was going to say, like, wow.
Hard acts to follow, that's for sure.
Well.
Good evening. As you're aware, the 2021-22 budget includes the replacement of the Cross Culvert along King Street. Staff became aware, concerned with this condition after Hurricane Dorian in 2019. And if you drive by there, you can start to see that the deterioration started to impact the travelway. So we have completed some temporary repairs in that area. This has afforded staff the time to put in, to complete design, submit our application for approval from Department of Environment, as well as, let me see, make sure, and complete tender, of course, for a new 2.4 by 1.8 meter called, precast called Concrete Culvert. It should be noted that the work in this area needs to be done within a specified period of time between June 1st and September 30th, of course, when the weather is the driest. The tender was drafted in June and issued in July, closing on June, July 30th. The scope includes obviously the installation of the precast culverts, along with rerouting the water, sanitary and storm infrastructure, and completing a, completing a street rebuild. Only one tender submission was received. The results are attached. The tenders were evaluated for compliance with the submissions and the project budget. Dexter Construction has the ability, knowledge and experience to complete the work. From a financial perspective, the budget for this project is $208,000 and subject to award tonight, we would be approximately over budget by just under $350,000. Staff have reviewed the capital project commitments for this year and next. And there's no one single project or combination thereof that could be deferred fully to offset the project over, proposed project over expenditure. And deferring any projects would compound the projected debt service ratio further, which is projected to be approximately 15% in 2006, 26, 27. We do understand that there is an operating surplus from last year, approximately $1 million. And there is an operational reserves in place of $4.3 million. There is an option to purchase the box culvert this year and install and to tender the installation only next year, which may realize some cost savings. However, there's no guarantee when it comes to tendering. It should be noted in staff's opinion that the general trend is that there's a very little interest in smaller capital projects under $500,000. And the results, and tendering results have been higher than project estimates, which right now staff can somewhat believe that is related to this COVID-19 pandemic. Staff have considered completing the work in-house, however, given the limited human and equipment resources and the intricacies of the project, that we, staff believe that our efforts are better suited to other projects. So staff would like, and also given the condition of the infrastructure and the potential of major impacts resulting from its failure, staff recommends the project to proceed this year and would like to make the following recommendation. The engineering department recommends that tender 20-05E would be, to be awarded to the lowest compliant tender Dexter Construction Company Limited for an estimated total cost of $551,162.8 net HST, funding with the over expenditure through the undesignated operating reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I'd like to know why it's 150% over proposed budget. That, that seems like a lot of money. Either somebody planned very poorly, that's just a lot of money to be over. 150%.
So would you attribute this to COVID or would you attribute it to?
This, what this project was on the docket the previous year. It was carried over this year because we didn't get the environmental approvals in time to do it within the dry season. So the budget actually was increased from last year to this year. So we, based on staff's estimate, we thought we were in line with what, what we expected to get was somewhere around 208,000. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that. And I believe other projects might be showing the same nature of coming in over budget as well. So again, staff think with, with the amount that there was only one person interested, there is very little interest. And then with, with COVID-19, we think there are some resulting effect from that. That's all staff can say at this time.
Well, we can have a three-hour discussion on, on infrastructure funding and gas tax funding and how we get less money than communities that don't have any infrastructure. And here we are sitting with, you know, massive amounts of infrastructure that need to be rebuilt, getting less money. Frustrating. Rusty, did you have a follow-up, Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, no, I, it bothers me that we only had one person apply. That tells me once that happened, they're going to charge what they want. They don't care. And, and we're losing because of it. Would it be an option to re-tender that and hopefully get, it just seemed to be a lot of money for that.
You cannot award the tender given that it's over budget.
Yeah.
If you re-tender, I think we'd have to get some legal counsel on that because I do believe you have to vary the scope a bit. Or you wait till the next year when you feel market conditions are better. Matt did give the option of buying the,
Yeah.
the culvert this year and having it installed next. But there is some concern that if we have some heavy rainfall events, that we may be finding that we're, you know, doing some emergency work there.
It's unfortunate that we're in the case. I know staff did, did research and get estimates for the, for the materials alone and, and just the price of, and, and looking at the tender certificate, the stormwater component of this is over our budgets, let alone the rerouting of all the other infrastructure. So we did get estimates prior to this to, how much would a precast concrete culvert cost us? And it was well below what the tender did submit. So that's why we, we did provide that as an option to buy the culvert now and then only tender the installation next year. But subject to legal opinion on whether that's sufficient enough of a change to re-tender it away, the, the only issue we have with that is completing the work within the specified time period of September 30th. So we would likely require a request from Department of Environment, which would then involve Department of Fisheries to get that extension or wait till next year.
Can you just run us through, let's say we have another heavy weather event or another Hurricane Dorian type event in the fall. If we don't do this work, what, what could we be looking at?
Well, worst case scenario is actually doing the work itself on an emergency basis. Staff, I believe, do, do a good job prior to rain events, significant ones, of course, to locate our infrastructure, to make sure that there's no risks to it, which would be blockages from debris or whatnot that could flood it. But worst case scenario would be replacing us in, in an emergency. And I can't predict whether that would happen or not. I just know that it has unfortunately started impacting King Street in that area.
Deputy Mayor?
Matt, could I clarify something you may have just said? Staff priced out buying the culverts?
Yeah.
Separately from this?
Just as part of the-
How recently?
Sorry.
How recently?
Prior to doing this, this would have been in this fiscal year. So I believe we would have done that in April or May.
And substantially less?
Yes, substantially less.
So then that kind of begs the question, is there anyone else? Like, can you go, can you just, if we didn't award the tender for this whole thing, bought the component, and then can we, can we go to tender just for the installation of what we bought? Or recognize that staff have too much on their plate to do it this year?
That, I believe that is an option to, to buy and re-tender it next year. So due to the over expenditure this year and also the timeline, that would probably be the likely scenario is to do, re-tender because it's just a little bit of rejigging of the tender because it's, we would just tell them it was supplied, just install only. And we would issue it in the spring, knowing that the work couldn't happen any earlier than June 1st, or they want to wait till the driest area, driest time, which also given the school year, you'd want to do it between July and August, the work.
I've got another question, but it's probably not for answering, but for just thinking. Because when you said, should we rephrase that? You can answer later. You don't have to answer me. I don't want to put you on the spot. But just when I heard you say that, you know, a lot of people don't want to bid on tenders that are under 500,000. Is there a way to package our infrastructure capital projects for the year to say, okay, we've got a culvert, we've got this, we've got this? Like, they're all similar. So you're not saying boiler replacement and culvert replacement to the same, in the same package. But if we had six large road type infrastructure, underground infrastructure projects that needed to be done in 2022, 23, could we just put those together? Because if we're not getting anyone bidding because it's under 500, but we have three projects that total $2 million, maybe they come in closer to what we think if we put them together. It's more worth their while. Because I get it. Like, if you're, if you're a medium sized company, you're going to take the giant project that sustains your, your crews for the year versus moving them all to Bridgewater, doing the small job, losing out on the other job. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot because I don't, I know that's probably something that you have to.
Certainly that would, staff would look into that. Of course, I'm not the director either. But I know that there would, that would take a considerable amount of planning to try to get those all out at the same time to do the work. The best that probably you would do was keeping light work. So pipe work, pipe work and whatnot. But I've never done that in my previous experience of lumping construction projects together. The, the best is, that we see is done is, is getting pre-budget approval and get them out as early as possible to get the best prices. So.
I'd just be curious.
I think we have to, to look at it. Because I know one of the downfalls of that is that you could potentially eliminate some of the not so large firm companies from bidding on the work because they don't have the capacity to do that magnitude. But, so I think you'd probably have to do a little bit of an analysis about the advantages and disadvantages of that approach.
Yeah. Councilor Thorburn?
Where the culvert itself come in fairly probably below what we expect or, or close to it. And the installation is the big thing that's killing it. I, I would seem to see us just buy it and, and tender again next year to put it in. And we can discuss it at, at budget time and get a firmer price for what it's going to cost us. And if it wasn't for an emergency, at least we'd have the culvert here to install if it was required. I certainly don't support the $551,000 that we're going to spend for something that should have come in under 208,000.
Councilor McDonald?
Do you, this is a really tough question. Do you have any indication of even like a percentage above a regular installation cost and emergency work costs? Can you say it typically costs 20% more or?
If, if I was going to be a gambler here, I would suggest that the, if you're in an emergency, you're going to pay what this tender is suggesting right now.
Okay.
If the market, the market shows that at this point, and to get them in, you may not, if you tender or re-tender, you may not get any bids. And then you're, you're kind of trying to figure out what do you do now.
Okay.
Councilor Fugier?
So if, it's the wish of council, if we do decide to just buy the culvert, do we have to re-tender?
Next year. You would, you would decline the tender now, you, to not award, given that it's over budget. And then given the timeframes that you only have until the end of September to get this work done, chances are we're not re-tendering now just to do the install without getting those approvals from Environment and Fisheries.
Yeah.
Which will probably take you till the end of September to get.
Wouldn't we want to have that product on hand if there was an emergency? I'm just thinking the what if?
I think the suggestion is that we would purchase that culvert this year and do the, do a tender for the install next year if council's comfortable with that approach. Like, that's, I think what I'm hearing around the table.
The only reason staff, the biggest reason why staff didn't suggest that as the onset is because it's already having an impact on the travelway. So from a staff's perspective, this is the only option that I can provide at this time.
I'm concerned that, I've bounced back and forth because at, at one point I, I thought, okay, well, we need to get the work done. I'm worried about the infrastructure. I'm worried about having, doing an emergency. And then I went to, well, buy the culvert and have it on hand. But then I'm just, I can't help thinking, if we can only get one bidder for this as a, in a whole, like it is, who's going to bid on just the install without making their markup on,
Culvert.
On the culvert? So we could end up, fast forwarding to next year, we have the, the piece of infrastructure and no one to install it. Or someone's going to say, I'll install that for a $550,000. Like, I just, we've, we've created a bit of a monster in how, how infrastructure projects are done. I don't mean us as Bridgewater. I just mean in, we have such a short construction season. We have so few companies in Nova Scotia that are able to bid on these because really they're, if they're that big, they're all owned by two or three companies. It's not much different than we see in solid waste where you get one bidder because one person owns all the trucking companies. So the issue becomes we, we're just, we've created this monster of, they only want the big projects. We're not big enough, but we have what we think is big work. And like, we're between a rock and a hard place.
We was down this road a couple of years ago on the same thing and we opted to pay the big price and get it done, which was over budget. It's, it's a gamble no matter which way we go.
Yeah.
Matt, so if, if we had, if we planned for this for next spring and so on, do we have the resources internally? Like, have you scheduled it out, resource internally to deal with it? And equipment or, or leased equipment or rent equipment?
I would have concerns about doing this level of job, as, as noted, just staying within our approval timeline. The, one of the, the main concerns is that, that water course always has water in it. So having the human resources to man a pump station to, for a bypass around the period of time for construction. So one of the beauties of tendering is moving liability over to a contractor. And in this case, it appears to be at a higher cost than what we would anticipate. You know, I would, I would say, does public have the ability to do it? Yes, we could probably do the work, but it would certainly impact our resources to do other work. So as I said, the, I think we're better suited with the size of our trucks, the size of our equipment for smaller jobs. But certainly I would have faith in my staff. They would have the ability to do the work, it's just not the resources.
Yeah. Councilor Thorburn?
One more, one more question. So my understanding, we're on setting on August 9th and this should be done by the end of September. Can we do it by the end of September?
With, with our resources?
No, no. If, if we accept this tender, will that, can we get it done?
Those timelines are in the tender.
Yeah. So they're obligated to get it done by that time? So they're obligated to get it done by that time? Because that's the environmental window closes?
Yeah.
And then, to your point, that's on them?
Yeah.
Hope we get to do something tonight.
Councilor Caldwell.
I would share Councilor Thorburn's consternation about a, a tender that comes in this far over budget. I mean, it's extraordinary. It's, it's tough to budget and make plans when things are this far out of whack. And I, and given that, I can't imagine that I have the stomach to award a tender that's that far over budget. So I think we need to come up with a Plan B, perhaps. It's buying the culvert and trying to find somebody to install it next year, or, or just go back to the drawing board next year. But I, I can't stomach approving that tender.
Any other comments? Councilor McDonald.
Typically, if we push a project out for a year, we increase by about 4%. When we're budgeting just to cover. So no matter what, we know it's probably going to be a little more expensive next year, if we do this again.
And, and if we, if deferred, in my experience, the number, market has shown what the value of the contract would be for next year. So the number would be approximately, from staff, what staff would use would be the one that market has shown in July, plus 4% or as you suggest, so.
Councilor Caldwell.
I thought the rationale for the, this being so far over budget was the pandemic. So if pandemic situation changes for next year, wouldn't we possibly come back in at a lower?
That's, that is true. Staff certainly don't know all the factors that go into the, the price other than what's given us, to us in the tender submission. So certainly, there could be more interest next year. Staff wouldn't know until we tender.
I think it's overall market conditions that the pandemic may have, you know, instigated that. But it's just like the housing market, we're going to expect as soon as the pandemic winds down that that's going to wind down to the same degree. So there, there is a risk that next year, this demand's still there for jobs and not enough resources to fill them.
If council decides to reject the, the tender and go back out, would buy the culvert, can we go back out, like, this fall for the work to be done next year? I know they have to do it in that small window. But can we, can we, like, the money, we approved the money for this year. So if we can, I just want to get so far ahead of this that we're not back...
You're asking the question, if we go out early enough, will it affect the pricing? Because Matt's indicated the work can't be done until June, because of timelines. So would going out in, say, January result in a lower tender price?
We need to get ahead of all the other municipalities, they're all doing the same. It's just, we do this, it's not our first go-round at this, this problem. And I know we can't go so far ahead with every project that we're pre-approving money, but to me, we're not pre-approving it. To me, it's saying, like, I'd say, go out, go back out in September to tender, to say, next June, who wants to do this work?
I don't want to go that far out.
I've never done that far ahead, so I don't, from a one fiscal year committing the money to another, I'm going outside my realm here, so.
It would be pre-approval, in the sense that it's, it's the next fiscal year that you'd be spending the money. So you have to approve the expenditure of funds in another fiscal year. I don't know if going out in September will make any difference than, than, say, going out in January to do it.
Everyone's in the same boat, so they're all sitting there going, let's go out in January, and we'll go ahead of everybody else. And if everyone has the same thought, then we're all going out in January for infrastructure work, and we're all, we're ahead of nobody.
You, you can certainly try it and see if someone's willing to bid that far out for this type of job. That's going to be the question, right?
Because maybe the smaller person, I mean, you, you made a good point where there's, you know, if you, if we have a big package, then the little, the little company can't necessarily bid on it. But if you gave someone a long ramp, then maybe they say, well, listen, I've, I've bid on this, I've, I've been awarded it, it's a, whatever, a few hundred thousand dollars. I know I've got it locked in, guaranteed, so my littler company, I can hire an extra crew of 10 people, and maybe we can do this job. It gives them the time to, maybe we would attract that smaller company.
If it just involved pre-approving for next fiscal year, which sounds like you're going to have to do the work anyway. You can always see what you get, so, you know, you'll know if it comes in, there's still that risk. But I don't know if they know that far out, but that's...
Or find that sweet spot. I just, we have to be innovative, because this isn't working. We have this discussion every year. I think every year, without exception, we talk about that one project that we, that comes in, and, you know, staff do their very best to, to estimate the project, but they can't control the pandemic, they can't control, you know, a bucket of infrastructure money that falls on other municipalities, which takes in all the resources of all the companies that who normally would have bid. Like, one, one bid is brutal. We need more competition, and we can't attract this.
And, and when infrastructure funding comes out, so there's been some announcements, and there will be more, that makes it worse, because that means there's more money out there, more, more demand, and the supply in terms of resources aren't there to, so. We're seeing that with, with tenders, that for other projects that we're involved in, that we're not directly awarding the tender. We're seeing things come in quite a bit higher than what we're estimated by, by our consulting firms. So it is a sign. We can, we could try that and see if, you know, if we went out in October, to see if someone's willing to bid that far in advance for a job in June. And if they are, you know, it might, it might affect price.
A neat little experiment. Worst case, you get nothing. Back to the drawing board anyway, right? And then you got to go out in January anyway. Councilor Fergier.
I think, I like your idea of going out early. That way, if we, we do get a response and, you know, if the tender did, doesn't end up coming in high again next year, then it may give, you know, staff an opportunity to sort of look at Plan B or put something together. If we have to use our own resources, then we can plan early, I guess. Yeah, it's a difficult one to know what's going to happen next year and what the prices are. There may be some benefit of going out early if we can.
Not sensing much of an appetite to award this tender. Haven't, haven't sensed that, so.
You need a motion to not award.
So if that is the will of council, I would need a motion to not award tender. Councilor Fergier.
So...
Motion to not award tender 21-05.
Okay, so you want, right now, it's in favor?
Did you have a question?
Just a quick one.
Yeah.
Matt, just to double-check, is there a benefit of buying the, the culvert components now and having them on-site, or is that a drawback for, in your opinion?
The benefit that we would realize any cost savings of a markup. Also, that takes, as the mayor's pointed out, that takes away of a contractor's profit as well. But having an on-site, I guess if I'm a very conservative-type person, it allows for an emergency install, if need be. But again, there would, that would take some work to do.
Yeah. Ready to make a motion? Thank you.
Yes, your worship. So I'll make a motion to not award the work due to being over budget, monitor the condition, re-tender next fiscal year, and complete the work next summer.
You have a question? Do you want a second or first? Do you have a question?
I guess the, is the intent to purchase the culvert this year?
I think that's, yeah, but is that separate? Do you need that separate? Because I'm buying the culvert from them.
So I would just say that the motion would be just not award, period, and just, and do a separate motion for the culvert and re-tendering next year.
So just to not award the, the work due to being over budget?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay with you, as a mover? Do you have a second or? Deputy Mayor, further discussion?
Question.
Who knew this would be the, the long item of the evening? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
So then, then we'd need, if council wishes to have the culvert purchased this year, I'm not too sure what the price is, but a motion to instruct staff to acquire the culvert this year and prepare and tender for the work to be, the install to be completed in 2022, 23.
Someone prepared to make that motion?
Show moved.
Okay.
What did you say?
Say, did you capture that, Senator? Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Caldwell. Any discussion? I think we've had it. At the discussion, I mean. According to me, all those in favor, thank you. Those opposed? Motion's carried. Save me from myself, thank you. Centennial Trail Bridge Assessment Engineering Services Award.
Hopefully, this one's a little easier.
Maybe.
The operation, the budget included the engineering assessment of the Centennial Trail Bridge. The objective of this project is used, is to ensure the former rail bridge is safe for its intended use as part of the Centennial Trail system. The assessment is a continuation of the inspection program that's completed every five years. The bridge is a key feature of the trail, and it was, it was inspected in the late 90s, again in 2014, and we did complete some work on the deck and rail system last year. The goal of this project is to complete a visual structural condition assessment of the entire bridge structure and provide a condition report, complete with recommendations and cost to complete the remedial work to repair any deficiencies. Furthermore, the report shall provide a, at least a 10-year maintenance and inspection plan, complete with costing. The RFP was drafted, was issued in June, and closed on June 25th with non-submissions received. And the submissions were reviewed by a committee of staff that reviewed the quality proposal, qualifications, proposed methodology and pricing, and the average scores are depicted in the attached table. Their proposal with the highest overall score belonged to Mitchell Moore Engineering Company Limited. While their technical score was low, their proposal did include an assessment in accordance with the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual, was of similar effort to previous inspections done by the town, and the firm has relevant experience confirmed by references on other trail bridges in, in Nova Scotia. Other submissions reference the same manual, and, but they use, the use of drones or rope-access subcontractors to inspect the bridge at an arm's length. The proposed price to complete the assessment by Mitchell Moore was $9,500 plus HST, and along with a provisional price of $5,000 to complete the design of safety anchor points that will assist staff with the maintenance of the bridge. It should be noted that non-technical score is based on only completing engineering assessment on the bridge, and does not include, the provisional prices do not factor in the scoring. Just to explain a little bit of the non-technical score or price, and why only one submission received 30 points and the others received zero, it's based on a price comparison. So if the lowest bid was $100,000, and the next bid was $110, they would be 10% more, so therefore, they lose 10% of the points. Once you get to the, once you get to the point that their price is double, those firms don't, any firms that are more than double the price don't receive any points. The approved budget for the 21-22 year was $50,000 net HST. Staff were successful also in receiving 50% funding, up to $22,000 of a $44,000 project for the assessment through TransCanada Trail Capital Improvement Program. Staff are recommending the, the award of both the engineering assessment of the Centennial Trail Bridge, sorry, I drank a little water here before the next one, and, as well as provisionally priced design of the safety anchor points. Additionally, staff are requesting a contingency of $6,500 pre-HST to expand the consultant's methodology to include the use of rope-access subcontractor. This request would improve the assessment and the development of the 10-year maintenance plan. Below is a, the table is just a summary of the budget. So $50,000, the bridge assessment itself is about $9,900. The anchor points would be about 52, with the contingency being about 68, for a total project cost of $21,948, $948, less the funding of $10,950.24. We would have a remainder of just over $39,000 if we completed all the scope as staff recommend. So staff would like to make the recommendation to, actually, to award the RFP 2021-04 Engineering Services for the Assessment of the Centennial Trail Bridge and Design of Safety Anchor Points to Mitchell Moore Engineering Company, limited for a total price of $14,500 plus HST, $15,121.76 net HST, and approve a project contingency of $6,500 plus HST to allow the expansion of the recommended consultant's methodology.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Caldwell.
This tender I like more. The, so the funding received from TransCanada, TransCanada Trail Capital Improvement Program, up to $22,000. We didn't use all of that, can we use up to 22 on a capital project on the bridge, towards a capital project for the bridge as well? Or would it, using that money, preclude us from applying for money for a capital project on the bridge?
At this point, the funding would be based on the scope applied for, which would be the assessment only. And if we were under, if we didn't maximize the use, I believe that money would go back. Typical funding scenarios would just go back in the pot. We could likely apply for more funding if there was improvements to be made this fiscal year. Whether, yeah, and it would still fall under the Capital Improvement Program. It's not locked in just engineering assessments, that I'm aware of, but staff have to follow that up.
Okay. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn.
I would move that council for the Town of Bridgewater award RFP 2021.04 Engineering Services for the Assessment of the Centennial Trail Bridge and the Design of the Safety Anchor Points to Mitchell Moore Engineering Company Limited for a total price of $14,500 plus HST, $15,121.76 net HST. And further approve a project contingency of $6,500 plus HST, $6,778.72 net HST, to allow for the expansion of the recommended consultant's methodology.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 9.7, Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force Recommendations from the July 7th, 2021 meeting. I guess I can speak to those, because I was there. The first one was that, it was noted that down at Bijunisca Park, there's no, there's currently no plaques. We have a bunch of, of those, those information plaques scattered around the town that explain the various parts of the community where they reside. I'm sure people have seen them. But there's not one at the park that references its meaning, its heritage. There's, there's nothing really to say, this is Bijunisca Park, and this is what it means. And, and so the, the Anti-Racism Task Force was asking that, that be investigated. So that was the, and, and hopefully added to the park. I'm looking at, Pat, just see if I've off my...
Pronunciation's here, it's been a big...
Right, so it would, it would phonetically have it out there. So that, that is, that is the first item that's there.
Just out of curiosity, did we ever go back and check the tender for that? That seems really strange, that there wasn't something done there for a project of that size.
Well, what's funny is there is one there, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with...
Yeah, I believe the one that's there references the 1891 quarter on King Street.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So the thought was perhaps closer to the flagpole, there'd be, but yeah.
Weird.
It's a bit of a miss, but it's caught now. Any, any other questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion on that item? Councilor McDonald.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater for the matter of the addition of an informational plaque for Bijunisca Park to the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. I'll speak to the, to the second item, which is a federal bill, C313, which would, is recommending criminal code changes on symbols of hate. So banning the sale of things like swastikas and kukluskayon hoods and items of that nature. It's, the, the task force did discuss it and... It's, the task force did discuss it and requires some clarification from the Member of Parliament who put forward this bill. And I really wish that when MPs put forward bills asking for municipal input, that when we ask questions, they reply. So as soon as I received this, I asked, I need to know, it'll be in the motion, who determines what is a symbol of hate? What are the, what are the triggers for that? Is it, is it a petition with 50 names on it and then they determine this now is a symbol of hate? Or is there a committee? Is there a policy or a framework? So I sent that weeks and weeks and weeks ago, and I have not, I have not heard anything. And I know that I have colleagues, other mayoral colleagues around the province who have also asked the same question and not received a response. So it is unfortunate because it was a pretty, pretty long letter that said, we need your support. And I think they would want to answer questions. So in the motion that's in your package is that note that requires clarification on the mechanism for determining a symbol of hate by contacting the bill's sponsor, which is MP Peter Julian, in case the members of the public are interested in who that was. So I don't know if counsel has questions? Try to answer this. Counsel McDonald?
Just a comment that has probably been discussed at the committee table, but if, as a community, we decide to support Bill 313, I think there also comes a responsibility for educating. So the questions that you all had around the table, that we make sure that we also give those answers to the community as well. What is a symbol of hate? How is that handled? Just so that the community is as aware as we hope.
Yeah. And with it being, that's a great point. And with it being a federal bill, I would hope that there would be a lot of, so it would have to go through its first and second and third reading, and then it would have to go through the same at the Senate. And I would hope that through all that, there would be some explanation from the federal government on what they're proposing. And some information for us to convey. And I know if it's going to be in the criminal code, and that would require police departments to also understand what that means and what to do with that. And I don't know if we have any businesses in our community that are currently selling symbols of hate. I would certainly hope that we do not. But clearly, the MP that raised this feels that there certainly isn't his community. Counsel Caldwell?
I certainly support the idea of endorsing this bill, but are we getting ahead of ourselves if we don't actually know what the symbols are?
Yeah.
Couldn't we just defer this? Or, you know what I mean? I'm not...
Yeah. It, we had the same question at the anti-racism meeting. And so with the response that we gave was essentially, it notes the big ones, right? So it, right now, the bill only clarifies swastikas, Ku Klux Klan hoods, and Confederate flag. And then it stops there. So right now, as I, in terms of the spirit of the motion, I think it would, it would lock us in there, saying those are, because that's what's written in the bill. But further, we need some clarification on what are the triggers for adding something else?
Okay.
Understood. I hope that, I hope that clarifies.
Yes.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel McDonald?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force and support in principle Bill 313, Banning Symbols of Hate Act, and further that the town clarify what the mechanism is for determining a symbol of hate by contacting the bill's sponsor, MP Peter Julian's office.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell. Had a discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So we'll draft a letter and send that to MP Julian. Thank you. Next item is 9.8, donations to the South Shore Fieldhouse Society. So I'll do my preamble, as always, that this is, we receive donations that people make on behalf of the South Shore Fieldhouse. And so they kind of come in and they go out. We're not making yet, like, we're not making a donation to the fieldhouse. We're essentially handing them back their money that was given to them by the public. Someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor?
I approve the Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $25,000 to the South Shore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Fager. Discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 9.9 is the Banking RFP Award. I see our Director of Finance is here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So in, let me get this to stay. Back in 2018, we extended our original agreement with the Bank of Montreal, which is our current bank. And our purchasing policy requires us to take professional services to RFP to get quotes on those. So it was time to actually go back to doing a full request for proposal, which was done in July. On July 21st, we received five responses, which was great. So Bank of Montreal, CIVC, RBC, Scotiabank, and TD Commercial Banking all responded. The evaluation is based on a point system, so there were points for various parts of their proposal, the executive summary, qualifications and references, scope, approach and methodology, banking services, added value and pricing, for a total points available of 100. And if you look, we had the, we had a group of four individuals actually go through the RFPs that we've received, and each individual scored. So what you're seeing is kind of the combined average score for each of the respondents. So Bank of Montreal had the highest total score at 87.5, followed by CIVC, Scotiabank, RBC, sorry, TD, Scotiabank, and RBC.
Questions? Pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Fager?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Your Worship. Let Council for the Town of Bridgewater enter into a contract with Bank of Montreal as outlined in the town's RFP for banking services and the Bank of Montreal's response to the RFP for a five-year term ending October 31, 2026.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We're getting there. 9.10, Facade Improvement Program Funding Request for 413, 417, 425, and 613 King Street. I see our Economic Development Officer is here to enlighten us.
Good evening. So we're looking at two applications. One is for 613 King Street for an amount of $5,000. The other one is actually three addresses under one property ID, which is 413, 417, and 425 King Street. So 613 King Street is where Digital Fusion is located at. That's the old library.
Post-op.
Old pasta post-op. It was there before my time. And then the 413, 417, and 425 King Street, one of the offices being used there was originally for the constituent office of the Liberal Party. If you remember those buildings. Just wanted to point out that these are both new applications. With 613 King Street, it's a single address with a one property ID, and that's an important distinction because the facade program is for property identification, not necessarily different addresses. These applications did go through the, through D-PAC and were approved. The 613 King Street has one commercial space and six apartments. It requires a fair bit of work in terms of the windows being rotting, the trim is, lost a lot of its paint. And so the application is to get that work done. It will require some scaffolding to be installed, which is an additional expense. What has, one of the challenges is some of the window shapes are unique. If you scroll down, you can see some of the images of the damage and where the rot is. And so those are going to be challenging to replace this, in particular with wood. So one of the concerns is that if there was a difference in material being used in replacing the window, that'd be something like vinyl, is to make sure that it complies to the intention of the Property Improvement Act. It meets the architectural, sorry, not property, it meets the requirements of the Facade Improvement Program, that it also meets the, which includes approval of a certain materials, but also improve the, maintains the requirements of the Heritage Act. So one of the things that would be a condition to be considered is that the materials that are going to be used for the windows in particular, that they get in, that that is a condition of the acceptance of the application. 413, 417, and 425 King Streets, they had initially in 2020, applied for a, I'm just looking through my notes here, they applied for getting some work done in advance. It wasn't a new application, new application, but they wanted to get a development approval done on it. And they did apply for it. They did receive it. The challenge was then at the time, which affected a number of the applicants at that time, is they couldn't find contractors to get the work done. We have since addressed that by being able to have a conversation with the contractor desks, with a number of the building supply companies, and they've agreed to, to find contractors to quote on this work. So as a result of that, I followed up with the property owner and asked him to submit an application. They've been able to find contractors to get the work done. That work has been already contracted and will begin in September. And it's a significant amount of work, which goes well beyond the actual amount available for the program, which is $5,000. And they're applying for the replacement of 13 windows, new siding, painted upper soffit, crown molding, and a lot of painting, and relocation, and electrical conduit. So this property as well will look significantly better as a result of this. If I scroll down to the finance and budget, what I do want to point out is the budget for the, for 2021, 2022, for the program is $25,000. We've had two applications, three applications already go through and get approved. There is one application that has been approved and the work has been completed, and that's for 620 and 626 King Street. They're waiting for inspection. Since this report came out, I went and had a look at the building and spoke with the planning department. We believe that the work that they're applying for the application for, and the work is completed, doesn't mirror what the application was for initially. So they may not qualify for the full $5,000, and that will affect what is remaining in the budget. And so the, what we have now in front of us now are the two applications for 413, 417, and 425 King Street. That is one application for $5,000. And 613 King Street, which is one application for $5,000.
It's nice to have some applications. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee and award Facade Improvement Program funding grants, each in the amount of $5,000 as presented in Document 21-1082. 413, 417, and 425 King Street, and 613 King Street.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Strategic Priorities Update. That's what you've been trying to do. That's, I don't like that look. I think this is going to take 45 minutes.
So everyone has a copy of the quarterly reports that are attached to the Strategic Priorities Update. So those are prepared by each department on a quarterly basis. So they're there. If you have any questions, we have staff here to answer that. I was just intending to give you a very, understanding the length of the agenda tonight, just a very high level overview of the priorities and where we are with respect to your priorities. And then if you have any questions, certainly ask away. So under wastewater, we're making strides with respects to the priorities there. We received the draft report and presentation in the first quarter, and so that would have been between April and June. And the final presentation is planned for the third quarter. The wastewater sewer rate transition strategy, we're targeting the third quarter to bring that information forward to council on a strategy for how we transition to a cost-recovery rate for wastewater. The betterment charges, we've completed that, so council has approved the bylaw, and the charge was implemented in June. So that was all completed in the first quarter of this fiscal year. And the planning policy review on wastewater is targeted for the fourth quarter. In terms of the Exit 12A Business Park Master Plan, you received the market analysis report at our last meeting. And the next step for us is to do the marketing strategy, which we're targeting the third and fourth quarter this year to bring forward. And that will be kind of wrapped into our economic development strategy as well, which leads us to the economic development strategy. So we just issued the request for proposals. Mark has been updating council on the proposed phase approach throughout this fiscal year. So the RFPs out, we hope to have that closed and awarded, which will be done in the second quarter, with the workshop to be held in the second quarter with council, and a strategy prepared by the fourth quarter, which will outline your priorities there. Open space plan is, we have a draft completed. It's been reviewed by the Parks and Rec Committee, and it's going to be presented to the Open Space Planning Advisory Committee in the second quarter. And then council will receive that sometime within the second quarter as well. So we're just about done that, which is something we've been hearing for a while, but we presented the draft. Energize Bridgewater, you received an update on the re-scope of that, the discussion session. And staff are in the midst of having those discussions with Infrastructure Canada about the re-scoping and the revised funding agreement with milestones. And the restructuring has taken place within the department, and we're presently recruiting for a project director and a project coordinator. Asset management, the FCM application submitted. Staff are participating in a asset manager mentor program, and this is with the Department of Municipal Affairs. So we've been paired up with Kings County, who's actually a little bit ahead in terms of asset management, to kind of get some lessons learned with respects to their approach to it. Tax rate and debt strategy, we completed the tax rate strategy with the budget. Debt policies, drafts have been completed in the first quarter, and those are with legal counsel right now. So we hope to have those to council this quarter. The accessibility plan, the regional coordinator has been recruited, so we entered into the MOU with the other municipal units for an accessibility coordinator to help each municipal unit prepare their, their plan with respects to their facilities and how we relay information. So that person should be starting to meet with the municipal units soon. The business improvement district, council received your report on the bid zones. There's been a bid information kit that staff are presently preparing in quarter two, which will be provided to businesses so that they can make some informed decisions with respects to their involvement in the bid. And the steering committee kickoff as well is targeted for the third quarter, but staff have been working to recruit business owners to sit on that committee. In affordable housing, we presented a report to council on the commission's report and provided comments with respects to that in the first quarter. And an affordable housing needs assessment, we're suggesting we're targeting the fourth quarter, just given when stats come out. But I would note that there's been some recent presentations by the province, in particular municipal fairs, that suggest that that would be a provincial initiative, as it's not an issue specific to one municipal unit, and they would have access to the same data as we would. So we'll wait to see whether or not we have to carry that out, or if it's something that's going to be carried out provincially. But regardless, we have had the conversations with municipal, our partner municipal units to suggest that we would need to look at it regionally, at least at a minimum. And Recreation 2.0, we have a goal... And recreation 2.0, we have a goal live date for online program registration. It was August, but I think they might have pushed that out to September, well, just after this report was prepared. So that's being led with the LCLC staff to have regional recreation program registration coordinated through them, but online, so MODAL and the town of Bridgewater would participate in that, and then possibly look at extending that out to other municipal units as a service. I have a revised strategic priorities chart also included on the agenda to suggest to you that there's a few things that have been added, that we need to be aware that when we put things in, it suggests that things need to come out, or you just need to be aware that they're now priorities, and we'd be working on them unless council says don't. The first is Energized Bridgewater re-scope, that's a now priority, and that has taken a lot of staff resources to, to do, but we hope to have that wrapped up in the next couple weeks and brought back to council in September. And then under the CAO's office, we've taken a few things out, like the job evaluation and salary review, which is on the agenda tonight, COVID, and the wastewater consultation plan on betterment charges has come out. But we've added in the fire department nonprofit society and the establishment of that, so that that can be the fundraising arm for our fire services. Under engineering, there's been some wastewater projects that have been done, so the betterment charges, as I indicated, we'll draw a line through that, and the energy management plan evaluation has been done as well. One thing that's not on here, again, timing of preparing the report, is the disaster mitigation fund, and that's a federal fund that just recently opened up. And that fund is for projects that build resiliency to climate change, or mitigate the impact of climate change. And one of the, our MP, Bernadette Jordan, has been suggesting that that would be a fund that we may wish to explore for some of our wastewater projects, particularly because our issue is the overflows that come from heavy rainfall events, and those are intensifying and getting more frequent, so, with climate change. So is that a possible fund? So there is a $20 million and a $50 million category, and so we're going to look at the $50 million category, but not a $50 million project, perhaps around $35 million, $40 million. All that to be said, that's a big funding application. It's huge, and it's not something that you do in a day. It's going to take staff at least three solid weeks of Audrey's time, Larry's going to be involved, and Allison, our grant coordinator, is going to be involved. But what that means is when you use that intensity of staff resources to do something like this, something's got to be set aside to do that. So I've asked Larry to meet with Audrey to see if there's something that we can set aside in order to have this funding application submitted. They're big, and there's a lot of technical information that you have to submit with these applications. So there, some municipalities actually hire consultants to do this type of thing, and spend several thousands, like with the LCLC, I remember doing an FCM one, and we spent $50,000 getting the required information to submit it, right? I don't know if we'd be necessarily that big here, but staff feel that they have the information, they have probably more of an expert at preparing the application.
Councilor Caldwell, any question?
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
Maybe I misunderstood. What's the potential funding amount?
Up to $50 million.
For us?
Well, no, no, no. Forty percent. So we have, it only gives you 40% funding, right? So we have to come up with the other 60. So I believe it's up to 50 million, a $50 million cap in terms of the project, and maybe we get 40, 40% of that. But if you look at our 10-year capital plan, we've put all our wastewater infrastructure in there outside of these next few years, where we have that infrastructure funding that we know of.
We plan for worst case and no grants.
Yeah. So 40%, good.
Wow.
Would significantly impact our debt ratio.
Yeah.
Well, that would be, that would be amazing.
Which is why it's worth dedicating the three weeks of staff time to do, but it's important for council to recognize that's going in the now box, and that means that you just don't do that with something sliding somewhere, right? So we'll, we'll look at that and let you know, but we feel it's probably something council wants staff to do.
It's worth it.
So that's the report, and as I say, I would encourage you, if you haven't, just to look through the reports, and gives you summary of department activities, all the grants that have been applied for, the projects that are underway, applications, those types of things. What I would ask of the council is, in agreement with the revisions to the strategic priorities chart that you pass a motion to approve that, revised strategic priorities chart.
Deputy Mayor?
Terry, for the grants that we're unsuccessful for, do we go back to them and ask for feedback as to why? What could we have done differently?
We, we do on the big ones. So there was a $5 million one.
Oh, we did go back.
We spent a lot of staff time on it, and it's like, so where did we miss on that one, right? So we request the funder to sit down with us, yeah.
Other questions? Is he looking for a motion now to accept the revised strategic priorities chart?
Yep.
Someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor Fager?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the revised, sorry, revised strategic plan.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, second. Further discussion? Question? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Remuneration review, job evaluation, and notice to revisions of that policy. Are you?
Yep.
It's just notice, I guess.
It's notice. So council did receive a presentation at an in-camera session with respects to the results of the remuneration review and job evaluation plan. Council was advised that the, the results of that work was the establishment of a job evaluation tool that would help us evaluate positions, keeping internal equity in mind, so that we compensated people equally for similar type responsibilities, and also a market review to ensure that we were competitive with market. It requires amendments to your personnel policy if council is supportive of the job evaluation instrument, the resulting grades, and the, the market review that resulted in the salary ranges that go with those grades. The proposed implementation had us have to look at whether CPI happens every year in November. It would suggest that we realign that to April, given that CPI in November will be around 4, if not more percent, and April it's 2.4. So we adjust by CPI, and then we move you into the, the steps, and the, the next closest step to what that salary is. So it's lower at 2.4, obviously, than 4, so there's some advantages to do that. From a costing perspective, staff advised that we had budgeted sufficiently for the salary adjustments that would come along with this, to put them in the, the new ranges and classifications, but we didn't budget for CPI to be 4%. So we had planned on 2%. But I guess every year we do the 2%, last year we budgeted 2 and got 0. So I guess, you know, sometimes you could say that kind of levels out. So the suggestion was that we realign everything to April 1, and reuse the contingency fund to fund the $40,000 shortfall that would come from doing that, and really it's the CPI that's causing the shortfall, as opposed to the adjustment. The other option was to implement everything in November, and there was a bit of a savings there, because the salary adjustments wouldn't be as high. I know there were some questions about if we adjust the salaries this year, is this just a one-time thing? Hit in terms of salary increases, and so I did do the calculation on that, and can advise that you'll see that every year. So next year it'd be $63,000, the following year it'd be 58, and the following year it'd be 42, and it goes down because people move closer to the end of their range, right? And the ranges were established to reflect merit. And lastly, the whole system is based on a performance management system, where in order to move within steps, staff are required to have annual performance reviews and have satisfactory reviews. So if there are performance issues, or poor performance throughout the year, then that's not rewarded with a step. So time doesn't give you the right for the step. There's performance that has to kind of support that as well. So tonight, if council's in agreement with what is being proposed, they're required to give notice. You're required to give notice to yourself that at the next council meeting, you would consider the amendments to the personnel policy to have this implemented.
Any questions? Again, we're going to, we're going to deal with this in the next council meeting, so if you have questions in the meantime. If there are any questions before that? Councilor Caldwell?
Just so I understand the process, tonight is just a procedural matter to debate it at the next meeting, if we so choose.
That's correct. You're required to give notice to council. It's supposed to be seven days, but seven days takes you to the next council meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll have a more formalized debate, but this is a time, if you had, if you had questions, and of course you can always email the CAO if you have questions between now and, now and then. Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council of the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the September 13, 2021 council meeting amendments to the personnel policy will be considered to approve and implement the classification and job evaluation plan as presented by Gerald Wallace Associates, approved, approved the revised salary structure for each classification, and approved changes to CPI adjustments to coincide with step adjustments April 1, 2021.
Seconded by, Councilor Caldwell was first. We've had a bit of a discussion, and again, we'll discuss this in September. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Would someone like to make the next motion? There's a motion under that as well.
Do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Okay. The town council for the town of Bridgewater gives notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the September 13, 2021 council meeting, policies 14, meeting pay, and 24 annual salary increments will be considered for appeal as there are provisions in the personnel policy with respect to meeting pay and annual salary increments.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Fager, had a discussion. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried, and again, that'll come up at the next council meeting. 9.13, discussion session briefing note for the August 3 meeting is there, and again, that's published to the website, so this information is there for the public as well, on the topics that were discussed at the briefing, or the discussion session. 9.14, does anyone have any questions about those? 9.14 is Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, the July report. I would really encourage people to take a look at that. Lots of people are served by this program, and I know I sound like a broken record when I say this is an incredibly valuable program to our community, especially during the pandemic, but certainly pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, it'll, it'll be something that's very important in this community, so. 9.15 is another, going to be another motion of notice. September 30 is a new national holiday, is the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, and so that does have an impact on our, on our personnel policy.
So it's the same deal, where in order to provide and recognize that holiday as a paid holiday, which would fall in line with the federal government's decision to recognize it at the federal level for federal employees, you'd be required to do an amendment to your personnel policy. And that would apply to non-unionized staff, unionized staff under the collective agreements already recognized, all federally announced holidays, so they automatically would have September 30 as a holiday. So this would be notice.
Okay, so this will come back to the September 13 agenda, which we're actively making longer and longer as we go. If you thought it was going to be a short meeting, we're wrong. Is someone prepared? Does anybody have any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward, that one. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Fager was first, I think.
Yes, Your Worship, that town council for the town of Bridgewater recognized September 30, 2021 as a statutory holiday for all town employees, and further give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the September 13, 2021 council meeting amendments to the personnel policy will be considered to include September 30 as a statutory holiday for non-unionized employees.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Conklin, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Down to business arising and unfinished business, the loan of the fire truck to Schinima Cass Fire Department is there. I know council had some questions and wanted some, something kind of formalized, so.
So yeah, they're, Cumberland County, actually, is the, they'll be looking at negotiating with council with respects to providing the fire truck to the Schinima Cass Fire Department. And they've indicated that, based on our request to basically say, what's your intentions with respects to the fire department, our fire truck we're loaning you, they indicated that they would like to continue to lease the fire truck till the end of September. I've given them an extension till the end of July, so this is the next council meeting. I indicated that council would like to see some monetary compensation for that, understanding that, you know, we're losing value. So they offered $2,500, and that would be lease payment to see them be able to keep the truck till the end of September, at which time we've already declared it surplus to the fire department's needs, so we'll be posting it for sale with our false surplus equipment. So what would be needed is a, an approval from council to enable the lease to be extended to the end of September with the compensation amount proposed of $2,500.
Questions from members of council? Is someone prepared to make a motion on that? Deputy Mayor Tanner, you're on a roll.
Sure, Shaq. No, I can't do it, because it's still loading, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if the internet's working.
Okay, I thought it was just me.
Yeah?
Yeah, I had it, and then it.
Mine too.
Do you want the motion read?
Yeah, why don't you like, do I need to?
Yeah.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Well, I'm getting circles and I'm going to turn it off.
That council for the town of Bridgewater agreed to stretch up the vehicle lease between the town of Bridgewater and the municipality of Cumberland until September 30, 2021, with the terms to be noted as in the vehicle lease stated May 29, 2020, in consideration of the $2,500 plus HSD to be paid.
Thank you. Someone prepared to move that? Deputy Mayor Tanner, do you have a second there? Councilor Thorburn, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. You're going to have to read all the rest of the motions.
I don't know why, is the screen just frozen?
Yeah, just kind of crashed. So the next, the next two items are the additions that we, we had to the agenda, so the addition is the postponement of the buyback agreement for 432 York Street. So I know council has had this discussion regarding this. I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
Yeah, just, just that the postponement doesn't eliminate the buyback agreement, it makes it secondary to a mortgage that would be placed on the property, and is a requirement on the lender in order to see the construction completed on the site, and the risk to the town is minimal, given that construction is well underway on that site, which is really what the intent of the buyback agreement is, so. The recommendation is, is that we authorize the execution of the postponement agreement for 432 York Street.
Okay, so someone prepared to make that motion? Do you want to read the, the formal motion report?
Okay, just do it.
Okay, perfect. Is your internet working?
No.
Do you have special internet? Is someone prepared to move that?
It's all moved.
Councilor Caldwell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. The next is the, the addition, which is the purchase of services of parking and bylaw enforcement between the town of Bridgewater and the town of Lunenburg, so we're selling our services to the town of Lunenburg.
Yeah, so, and this would be a seasonal service that's been requested, so it varies based on the season, and we would be charging 1.49%, so, of the salary of the individual that would be doing the parking enforcement, and there would be a set schedule for that. So it'd be, it wouldn't be dispatched calls, it would be based on a set time to, to be walking the streets in the town of Lunenburg for parking enforcement. The police chief has reviewed this as well, and is confident that the service can be provided to the town of Lunenburg. There is a 90-day termination clause as well, so if we determine that the needs exceed what we're able to provide, we have the ability to terminate that as well. And... And so the one thing that is outstanding is just to confirm insurance requirements. So there, the agreement does have some requirements for the amount of insurance coverage, so that has been sent to our insurer to ensure that it's adequate. So I would suggest that the motion of council would be, if council's in agreement, is to authorize the execution of the service agreement with the provision of service agreement with the Town of Lunenburg for parking and bylaw enforcement, subject to confirmation from our insurer that the insurance requirements can be met.
Someone prepared to move that? Councilor Thorburn, do you have a second or? Councilor Fager, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. We're down to new business, police patrol vehicle. So I see our illustrious police chief is here to answer your many, many questions. It always amazes me, as you come down, that in the capital budget, there's nothing to change those seats, which are so incredibly uncomfortable. I don't know if they're designed to get people to come and then go right away after their, after their delegation, but I would have thought that, that staff would have come in with like a sawzall or something and just cut that one board that jabs into your upper spine. I noticed that our engineering director is sitting at the back where that does not apply.
A little heavier weighted than the front.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Thank you, Worship. So I'm here on behalf of Police Service for Police Tender 2003 BPS. Underneath the 2021-22 budget, there was preapproval, or there was approval for a capital purchase of a new market patrol vehicle. We did do an RFP. There were no tenders received as, as this RFP was sent out. Mostly, I would say, a lack of availability for, for police vehicles. I did reach out to the provincial tenders, or the provincial approved suppliers for vehicles, which included Ford and Dodge, which are the two main dealerships that provide police vehicle packages. So we're asking that council close RFP, or, the request for tender, sorry, 2021-03BPS, and either offer alternative procurement should one arrive before the end of 2021-22 operating season for emergency purchase, or postpone it for another year again.
Any questions from council? I mean, I know there's a vehicle shortage, so it's not actually a shock that, that there were no bidders.
Correct.
This does then allow us to sole source?
It does.
Which would allow us to potentially move towards an electric police vehicle if that is something that meets the criteria, correct?
It does. Whatever council's wishes are. I do know Dartmouth Dodge have four on order. If they come in this year, maybe, maybe not, but majority of the dealerships are saying next year after April. As you drive around, you can see the dealerships locally, they're starving for vehicles to sell.
Yeah, I noticed that one of the car dealerships, yes. Councilor McDonald.
So come next year, are we gonna have trouble getting a vehicle because there's gonna be so much demand, and is there any way to kind of get out ahead of that and beat that rush?
Probably. I think we're gonna be stuck in a couple of years where we're gonna be looking for four vehicles all in one year, because we postponed one from last year, we postponed another one, so we're getting behind on our, on our annual recycling process, so all our, all of our vehicles have well over 100,000 homers on each one now.
So now imagine that we're up against, like we are when we just talked about infrastructure. So you've got, tenders gonna be issued for, you know, 25, 30, 50 police cars from larger units. I can't imagine what Toronto buys a year.
Correct.
So they're gonna take up all the stock. We can't be like the city of New York that pre-purchased, they purchased like 10,000 Crown Vics or something. When Crown Victorias were going to be ramped out of production, I think they bought 10,000 and sat them in a giant parking lot so that they could have them for decades.
Most of the larger agencies does. I know the RCMP for the province a number of years ago purchased 200 and just put them on the, on a lot to draw from over the next few years.
We don't have that kind of money or space. Other questions?
Are there any of those Crown Vics left?
They're probably triple now.
Yeah, and they'll probably sell at the top dollar.
Demand is higher than supply.
Well, who knows? This may present an opportunity to try something that's outside our norm. Who knows? Other questions? So the, the motion, I don't know if your internet came back, mine kind of eventually came back. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I will. I would move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater formally close tender 21-03BPS and further authorize the procurement of a marked police vehicle through the alternate procurement as provided for in Section 18 of the town's purchasing and tendering policy.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Fager, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, 11.2, this came through Councilor Thorburn. Just a question about sidewalk on La Havre Street, I guess going up Silver's Hill was the, was the question? And you were just wondering if that's?
Well, I was, a resident called me, actually Tim Atkinson over there, he's lived there since 75 when I come to town, and it was always, I think, a safety issue, but then when Exit 13 opened up, there was more traffic, and actually more people trying to walk over there to go to work that was using that, and it's blind spot there. As a matter of fact, school buses stopped stopping, they wouldn't, and I was led to believe, he told me that postal had stopped delivering mail there to the residents, so it stops down at the ends of that street. So I, I think it's certainly a safety issue. I think it's something that has to be looked at, and I, and I think there's more traffic on that street now makes it much more dangerous for the walking public, traveling back and forth there, that we should really look at putting a sidewalk up on that street.
No, and I know we have Mr. Feiners here. I don't know that, it's not currently sitting in our capital plan anywhere.
There's nothing in the next 10-year capital plan, but I guess quite a few years ago, we had a project in the future column for about 2.8 million to make changes on La Havre Street between Aberdeen and, well, essentially North Street. It was kind of two projects, one was 2 million, the other one was about 800,000, but that was always in the future item on, in the capital budget, and I guess it never became a priority over the last number of years with council.
Yeah, we, we do know that the District of Lunenburg will be, I believe they've received funding to extend sidewalks to the Irving and do intersection improvements. I think DOT is doing intersection improvements where Silver's Hill meets North Street, and so that may prompt greater demand for it, but I suspect that would, I mean, we'd be starting from scratch, which would be like design and some of the concept options and design and probably land acquisition and a number of things that would have to be planned there. There is funding that I believe, Larry, you talked to Allison about last week with respects to active transportation, that, there's a fund that was just recently announced, and so Allison sent it out to see if there was any projects. That could be one, that could be applied for to see if we could get funding to do some design work and to come up with some, some options and understand the cost better, but right now, it's just a number, right? And it's way out in the future. So council would have to, to decide that that would be a priority to explore through funding, and we wouldn't get 100% funding either. I can't remember what, was it 100% there?
For the, for the study, I think it was 100%.
100%, yeah. So if you, if you want us to explore, Allison's always looking for things anyway, so we could always explore that one as a funding opportunity to see about the concept, if you consider it to be a priority to look at.
So if, if there's 100% funding available, and we can apply for that?
It's a staff time.
Yeah, it's a staff time, so that's something that council has to want to do. Yep, Councilor Caldwell?
So if we were to apply for funding, wouldn't we, like, could it potentially be taking away from another project that's on our, that's already on our list that may qualify for that funding?
I don't believe we saw anything that, that fit that within the next, within the timeframe of the funding application and when it had to be completed by, right? Because it was like a narrow window.
Yeah, Allison was gonna check with McKenzie with regards to the AT components to see if there was anything there, but I haven't heard whether there was or not.
Yeah, so I think it had to, it was, it had to be done by the end of the fiscal year?
I believe, the study, I can't recall the dates, to be honest.
Yeah, just remember it was a short window, so when we looked at our capital budget and plan, we didn't see anything in there that necessarily fit that bill.
And I did, I had thought before about the project that MODL is doing up from the exit to the Irving, more or less, about if there was a way we could dovetail into that. I'm just wondering, I'm not exactly sure what they're doing, but I was concerned it may, it may have a sidewalk that just.
There's a sidewalk and a traffic light.
Ends in the middle of nowhere.
Not just sure what side.
Yeah, so that we may need to look at our end, what might need to be done there.
There may be. I, I don't know if we've seen the plans to know what side of the highway tenet's on, and, you know, how that connects up across the interchange and, or the, you know, the overpass and that, but it will come down to the Irving and what they do there in terms of the entrance and exit there, but we, Larry had brought it to my attention some time ago, that that would probably prompt residents to not want to go all the way down North Street and then down Aberdeen, but come down Silver's Hill, because it's a shorter distance to get to the downtown area, and so we, we probably will at some point in time see increased demand to accommodate pedestrian traffic on that road.
Can you put a sidewalk there? Like, when you look at the street, it's, it's in two locations, certainly in one, it's like curb house, so you can't really put it on that side, and then when I look at the other side, the driveways are so sloped that if you, if you, if we, we would have to purchase land from the homeowners, which would perhaps impact the slope of their.
Yeah, we'd have to look at both options. I'm not sure, I don't believe you'd get them on both sides, which our standard suggests for a collector street. I think we'd be lucky to get it on one side. As you said, you know, the steep bank on one and the steep drop-off on the other, I guess, we, certainly pedestrians are, are using this, I'll call it the south side, you'll see a gravel path worn. We, we were envisioning it to be on that side with likely retaining walls, rail, and, you know, hopefully a minimum width sidewalk, but it may mean altering the road as well. If the road is wider than need be, it's a challenging geometry as it is, but it, it's not a, it's not a simple project.
Okay. Councilor McDonald?
Has there been consideration of that being one-way, just coming down, down the hill, not up?
I wouldn't say that there was any serious consideration, but it could be options, especially if, you know, the infrastructure's not meeting standards, that would be one of the options that we could consider.
Other questions? Deputy Mayor?
DOT is doing the work in MODL, could we ask them to do some of this work for us?
It's because they own the road. Modo's responsible for the sidewalk, so I think that they're probably either paying for it, but, yeah.
You were like channeling your, your inner Michael Graves with his, if your snowplow is driving from that side of town through town to the other side of town, why don't you just leave the blade down? I see what you're saying. If you're just gonna build a sidewalk, why not just keep going? I like, I like your thought.
But they, they would get involved in that because they own part of that roadway going down Silver's Hill.
Where it connects.
Yeah, that's where it connects.
In all seriousness, I've heard, looked at like a pathway down Haven and connecting to La Havre, or anything like a?
Well, there is now.
There is?
Yeah.
Local streets.
Oh, yeah, behind there, yeah, further down, yeah, okay, yeah. I was looking on the corner, okay.
Other questions? So you said Allison is looking at this now, or do you need, do you need council to direct staff to investigate the option of, or to investigate funding?
She was, it was brought to her attention, I don't know how far she's gotten into it, but I think a direction from council, if you want us to, to make that one a priority under that fund, we can.
Does council need a little bit more time to digest? I know this just, this just appeared tonight, so, I mean, we can have Allison investigate?
I can also have Allison, like, in terms of what's required in the application and how much effort and all that, I'm not too sure, so we could have that investigated. If it's minimal, then she's fine to write some, some paragraphs about why this would be a good initiative, but if it's gonna involve a little bit more, then.
So why don't we do that, and if it needs a little bit more, it'll come back to council? Because we have to discuss, you know, we have a set of priorities, and if we want to, want to move things around or add this to the capital plan, then council needs to have that discussion, so we'll let CIO work with Grants Coordinator, and it'll come back if it needs more direction from council. You might as well stay there, Larry, I'm sure that there's gonna be a question regarding this next item, which is a business through a member of council asked, they have an outdoor patio in, in the town center parking lot, and they requested, as we know, the sidewalk bylaw, the patio.
Sidewalk cafe.
Sidewalk cafe bylaw requires that they be removed at the end of October, and so they've made this request to leave it there in the, in the parking lot all year. I know they asked a similar question last year.
Yeah, I think, so they had asked last year, they indicated they would take the ramp off, like the sidewalk portion off, so that the sidewalks could be kept clear of snow and that type of thing, it wouldn't be an obstruction, but what they want to do is keep the deck there, because they built the deck, it's difficult to move, that type of thing, although they did remove it last year, it's a cumbersome thing to do, my understanding is. Staff at the time had some concerns about it remaining because we have a catch basin underneath the deck, that if we can't get out, it could get jammed with ice, and then that causes flooding in the parking lot, and there's, there's a number of operational issues they had concern with, plus it's a, it's a parking lot. So we were accommodating it last year through amendments to the Sidewalk Cafe to say that you can have the deck on town property, and that was all kind of in recognition of COVID-19, trying to get people outside, but still participating in, you know, those types of establishments where they can be spaced out and all that stuff. So they're asking again, the issue of the catch basin is still there, that still exists. They did suggest that they could come up with some form of a hatch, but obviously you've lifted up, I'm guessing, to get at the catch basin, to clear it out, so they're asking if council wishes to consider amendments to the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw, potentially maybe the town property bylaw, to enable this to be stored there in the off-season. It's essentially what, what it would be, is storage on town property, and the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw so that the deck wouldn't have to be removed, it could stay there all year round. And as I say, last year, we, we indicated that it wasn't able to be accommodated because of the drainage issue, and then there was some talk about possibility of extending the season, just to allow people more time in these establishments, but I clarified with the, with the applicant that this isn't about extending the season, it's about being able to store the, the deck within those three parking spaces. And so the question becomes, you know, if, what was being proposed here tonight is that if council wished to entertain the request, then we would have staff investigate whether or not that, you know, if there's issues with that, because we now only have to think about the town center parking lot, but are there other town properties that this similar type of situation could apply to, where that request could be made to store something on town property in the off-season? And do, did we want to entertain that? And if you do, then we can come back with a report with the options for amendments and some of the, the operational things we may want to consider.
I believe the other significant concern from staff was around snow clearing and, I guess, potentially an obstacle that may cause challenge. I guess, potentially an obstacle that may cause challenges, especially at night. And, you know, if it does get damaged, where perhaps there's ways around that as far as the damage goes and who's responsible. But I believe that was the other current concern with staff, was winter maintenance.
Any questions or comments from council?
Do we know offhand, what size is it offhand?
It takes up three parking spaces.
Three parking spots?
So, they did remove it last year?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it was just a challenge.
I have a few, I have a few concerns. And what, you've mentioned most of them. One would be if we do this and allow storage of this on, like, because it essentially just becomes storage, then I believe it then opens up town property for storage for other businesses. Can I put, you know, can I put my deck there if it's another sidewalk cafe? Can I put a storage container here? So, I'm worried about the precedent, and I'm also very worried about if we have a snowplow that hits it, like, that's, the liability's going to end up being on us. I don't know how we would be able to transfer that liability. You can't say, if we hit something, it's your fault for leaving it there. I don't know, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know if a court would side with someone else if we actually hit it. And then there's the catch basin. So, then that creates a liability. If that catch basin's blocked and ice goes across the sidewalk and someone falls, then there's a liability as well. So, I don't know how you transfer. So, the precedent is one thing. I don't know how to get around that. But the liability, I wouldn't support that unless 100% of the liability was shifted away from the taxpayer of the town of Bridgewater. So, you'd have to say, if someone hits it, we hit it, someone drives their car into it, then the liability would have to be on the business. If the sidewalk freezes because the catch basin was blocked and froze, then someone else is going to have to take the liability. And I don't know, I don't know how you do that. I'm not sure. I wouldn't, if I was the business, I wouldn't want to take that liability. I just feel like it's not, it's not worth it. Counselor Thorburn?
When that was installed, there was guidelines on what they could do and couldn't do. And probably my understanding would be that it was a seasonal thing that would have had to be removed at the end of the...
October, yeah. They were aware of that.
And they were aware of that when they done it. So, as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't be setting that precedent.
Is a different option, like, if the issue is just getting it a little bit out of the way, to me, is a viable option, and I don't know the answer, to move it to the back and kind of tip it up? Like, could they lean it against their building at the back corner? Like, could, then they don't have to take it apart if they could stand it up?
I believe it'd still be on town property, probably with similar challenges around winter maintenance. I think we've tended to store snow in the back corner temporarily until we can get back and truck it away. So, it probably would still interfere with winter maintenance operations and still be on town property.
Okay. Counselor McDonald?
So, for me, any space owned by the town is public space. So, when the patio's there, it's being used as a public space. If it can't be used, has to be blocked off for liability reasons and so on. Now, it's being taken away from the public. So, even though it's only three parking spots, those three public spaces are being taken away and just kind of cornered off. There's also, when you're talking about liability, is it secured properly? Is it blocked off so that people can't, you know, slip and fall on it? Or, you know, I don't know all of those things, but I worry about if it's sitting on our property and we've given permission for storage on our property, then if somebody hurts themselves because, you know, a rope was on it and was taken off, then we can't have staff with their monitoring it too.
We can, like, through agreements, we can transfer liability. So, you can require that they carry insurance. Like, there's a number of things you could do. But the reality of that all is, is that because we're involved in it, we're involved in it, right? Like, just because we get deeper pockets. Town has deeper pockets than an individual or company. So, we often do. They're going to close it off. So, they take the ramp off and close it off so that you couldn't gain access to it. So, but so it would literally just be destroyed there, right? It wouldn't be used.
Storage is a problem for everyone, including us. And, I mean, we see it at the arena, that, you know, there's some space for storage and everybody is kind of on that. And can we put this here? Can we put that there? So, I'm really concerned about the precedent and that as soon as people see a potential storage space, because people are so desperate for that space, that it's not going to be the last one we see. And that's, that to me is concerning, because we can't start to fill parking lots and parks and so on with items that are being stored. You'd have a million agreements to try to remove liability. Yeah. I just don't think, I don't think it works.
Counselor Caldwell?
I sympathize with the owners' predicament and understand what they're asking for. But ultimately, I think the points made here tonight are good ones. And if it's, you know, if it's not in use in the wintertime and given all the concerns that have been raised, it's probably not reasonable to accommodate that request. That said, I hate to, you know, I want to be accommodating as possible for business owners in the town, but given all the concerns, it's probably not reasonable in this case.
I think we all want to do what we can, especially, you know, pandemic-wise, to maximize support for local business. I mean, it's why we changed the sidewalk cafe bylaw to allow the deck, which previously was not allowed in the parking lot, right? We amended that to allow that, especially at a time when there was no, like, indoor dining. So, yeah, like you, I sympathize. And Counselor McDonald, your point is well-taken. Everyone is searching for storage. Every group that we come across is, oh, we'd like to rent this facility. Can we use it for storage? We had that at the old arena, right? Like, people wanting to rent the space, but there's no storage. It's just, I get it. Any other comments? So, it's status quo for that then, and we'll let them know.
Yeah.
Okay. That's got to be a record for a long meeting. That's three and a half hours. I apologize. But we don't adjourn for the entire month. So, we do have to, we do condense our meetings. So, we do have to get through as much business as we can. Business of the town doesn't wait for us. So, we have to go through it. So, I appreciate your patience. Thank you to staff who are still sitting in the most uncomfortable chairs in Lunenburg County. If there's no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you.